I owe you an apology. When you came up here and spoke for your three minutes, I owed you our undivided attention. And interrupting you and such was uncalled for, and I apologize for that.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do have a comment about chickens. Do you want it now or do you want it on the agenda?
And for the chickens, we will have some discussion on that. So I'll look to you at that time when you can come up. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. These items on here are designed to make the meeting more efficient. The items on the consent agenda are approval for previous meeting minutes for February 11th, application for renewable liquor license from JR's Country Store, authorization for council member Nicole Roberts to submit an application for scholarship to the Colorado Municipal League, and a letter of support from council. Resolution number five, Series 2025, authorizing City of Rocky Ford to reduce sewer rates to cover capital improvements. And resolution number six, Series 2025, a resolution of the City of Rocky Ford establishing dormant utility fees. If anyone would like to move those to the regular agenda for discussion, please let me know.
I have one question. Did we change the sewer rates to start sooner than we discussed last meeting?
July 1.
Because I think we need to do that. Is that not correct, Stacy?
It will put us behind putting the bond council.
To get the proper.
We will most likely see another resolution coming up on this same one. We do need to add a lot of things in there to make sure that all of the, that this is on the use for that capital improvement, that this ends when that loan is paid off. So we still have a lot of things that we need to work on on that one.
I just want to make sure we're squared away so we can get our own approved.
Right now, we have the start date of July 1.
Didn't the state give a deadline on that for the loan? So we had.
They need to see an ordinance ASAP. Just to go move forward with the interim financing.
I make a motion that we improve the consent agenda.
We have a second from Montana. Call the road.
Aron.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Montano.
Yes.
Mayaguruay.
Yes.
No changes to the agenda. We have no presentations. We'll move on to city manager's report.
We will have an update on 501 North Main for the next meeting. I think it goes to tomorrow. 701 Sycamore, property craft has been out and put up orange fencing around the perimeter. And demolition day is March the 10th. So that's good news there. We did receive the, they call it a purchase order, but it's a contract from CBPHD, so everything's ready to go. And property craft again is asking for a master service agreement. And all that would mean is if we sign it, that if we have a property that needs immediate attention, that we would get priority. The Eighth Street property, talked to Otero County title, Georgia Williams, and she's working on the title work. No closing date has been set yet, and Jack Parker has been notified. Talked about the sewer improvement project. Bond council, they need, that they need the ordinance. New business, Shelley and I have been working on doing an audit with all the job descriptions, and I'm happy to say we're almost done with that. Just ensuring that the content is up to date and aligned with the work that's actually being done. Still working with code enforcement with the cloud permit, trying to get a strategic plan in place to move forward and how this is going to roll out. There's still some questions. I think it's a little overwhelming with all the information that's coming in. Again, we have been collaborating with department heads and supervisors with the handbook. It's a slow process, but it's been great conversation and feedback. So we review this once a week, and so we'll get that to you just as soon as we can. Upcoming, the Rocky Ford Rural Fire Protection District will be bringing up their IGA. It is up in March next month. Police Department continued with a story with Pop last Friday at the library. Public Works, we reached out to Colorado barricade on the street signs, and there's no change from the quote that they gave us in November. So I guess that's a repeat, repeat. Rocky Ford Parks and Rec were continuing with the Lego Drive. Youth basketball ended this past weekend. Soccer registration is open. And we'll be starting interviews for the recreation coordinator position probably in about a week. I think we've had nine applicants there. The Rocky Ford Library closed on Friday to do an inventory audit. They thought they were going to finish on Saturday, but I guess they got finished on Friday. Rocky Ford Museum had a night at the museum, the Amachi Internment Camp, a Day of Remembrance. We had a Secret Rome stakeholders meeting last Thursday afternoon and Friday. It was great conversation, but not well attended at all. We had the stakeholders there on Friday, and so got a few things worked out, but did serve meals both nights and just was not well attended at all. The speed study is done, and it was done by Lex Nichols, and Carol will be giving us that report on that, and I'll go with that just as soon as I get it. One thing that's not on here, you'll probably cover it, Pancake Supper Monday?
Let's see if we wait, we don't have any.
It's actually not even my event. It's the Lions Club Pancake Supper, and they've done it for many, many. I don't even remember when they started doing it. Like, I can remember as a kid, when we first went there, I was 10, they were doing it, so I mean.
Any questions or?
All right. Any more citizens' concerns on the speeding, I'd say?
No.
Pretty much what I'm saying.
No, because it can't be my time.
Well, you know who it is.
That's me when I drive it on speed.
I'm good.
All right, we'll move on to our next staff report. Will be from Fire Chief Rick Gonzalez.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. I'm here with you again. I have a report on the fire department and the DUD in 2024. Kind of what we're going to be doing for the future as well. Most of the time when I come up here, I are all pretty much stuck listening to me, Todd, and describe the fire department, what we're doing, what we've been doing, and what we're going to do. So this year, I thought I'd try something a little bit different. So if you notice behind me, we've got a huge team of fire department members. Each one of these individuals, not every single one of them, but we're going to have some of them coming up here to give you a presentation on the different things that we do with the fire department. Those things are split up into three departments, just like it is budgetary departments. So we're going to have a fire report, we're going to have an EMS report, and we're going to have a wildland report. Well, you don't get to hear me this year, so yay. You can hear them. Each one of them has very strong strengths related to the different disciplines that they're involved with. And I think it's important that you hear their voice and how motivated and driven they are within their own discipline. So without further ado, what I'm going to do is I'm going to start with Andy Hartless. So Andy, if you want to come up, introduce yourself. Andy is our EMS captain. Before we get started with his report, I wanted to get our party of audience kind of in sequence as to the different reports and the different amounts of information that they're going to give you. You're going to be given a lot of information tonight. So just know that just because we just give you these handouts doesn't mean it just stops there. We are open at any point in time when we have. Anytime you can come and ask us any questions, ask me any questions as well, some of you have. And it's been real nice to have that engagement. So maybe you can use some cotton real quick.
Thank you, sir. Perfect.
All right, so the first one we're going to be talking about is going to be this first part right here. It talks about EMS calls. That's the document that Andy's going to be talking to you about this year. Andy, go ahead.
Good evening. Sorry you have to hear from me. You'd like to hear from the chief Gonzalez, but he's taking me up here. So the front page right here is the different areas we responded to. In the future, we're working on more specific areas that we're going to break down the calls into inside the city limits. That's going to be coming in the future. Hopefully next year, we'll have that lined out. They'll give a more detailed report for you. So you see through here all the towns and areas that we've responded to. So it's not just our area that we're taxed with assisting. Your next page is a bar graph, kind of breaks down a generalized call line, what we're looking at. Anything from assist the public to abdominal issues, to overdoses, to trauma. Kind of broken down in there to kind of group things together, make it really easier for you.
So kind of piggyback off what Andy's talking about here. We thought it was important to give you this information regarding the different call types that we're dealing with and some of the different illnesses and injuries, as well as what we're dealing with within the community. Because that helps gauge kind of what we do as far as a danger risk reduction program, things like that, to come up with a game plan. Also working with the public health department, the state EMS department, things like that. So that helps us get an idea of what's going on with our community. That way, we're more in a better position to act upon.
Can I ask you a question? Now, the EMS calls, this is all emergency, the ambulance type stuff?
Yes.
So you've actually had incidents out of Alamosa County?
Absolutely.
Really?
So what that one was, I looked that back up again. We had a 911 call on Highway 10. It peaked in our area, and it was called 911. So they were actually driving, and it turned out they were closer to Alamosa. So we actually dispatched, we're heading that way. They lost service, they called back, and we figured out that they were actually closer to Alamosa than us. So that's kind of one of the difficulties we have sometimes with 911, with the cell phones. They'll, it's based off the towers, what tower you hit. You don't necessarily hit the closest tower.
We do, or we have done some transports as well out of the Trinidad location, too. Where we've done interfacility transport. So when it's closer, like on Highway 350, heading towards Trinidad, we'll get around that area where it's just closer to travel to Trinidad than it is to travel to ABRNC. So when that's the case, Trinidad may also use us to say, hey, can you go ahead and while you're at it, transport this individual to Carar Springs or transport him to Pueblo? And we'll do that as well.
So you may have known for the last few years, we've had an ambulance on order. The ambulance that we ordered in 2022 should be arriving in the first quarter of '26. After COVID, there's been huge shortage of components and workers available. So they're finally ramping that up, and hopefully we'll see our first ambulance in 2026, first quarter of '26. The ambulance that we ordered last year, we should have our chassis in 46 months, and it should be delivered by June 30th of '26. So next year should be pretty exciting for us to have two brand new ambulances that we've been waiting for.
Do we have paperwork on that?
On the ambulances?
Yeah, on the ambulances.
Oh, yes, yes. And we've handed out the grant paperwork, the grant, the EMTS grant, the state EMTS grant, what actually helps fund and what is funding these ambulances. So we only have a 10% match on our end to pay for these ambulances. The state EMTS grant.
The question I'm asking, do we have paperwork that he's looking at on that?
Oh, this is my notes right here.
Oh, just your notes, okay.
Yes. So I just kind of talk about what notes I have on here.
Anything that we give you, we can also provide you by email. Or any report that we get tonight, we can also provide by email.
The other thing I wanted to bring up, kind of some generalized news across the state, is there's a whole blood coalition that meets, and they're trying to get whole blood out to the different areas in Colorado to use for trauma patients. These major car wrecks, gunshot wounds, stabbings with severe trauma. They're figuring out that the sooner that we get blood on board, the better their outcomes. Right now, the closest place that has it is Pueblo County, Pueblo Rural, and Pueblo City of Pueblo. With time, hopefully the next couple of years, hopefully we'll see it out this way. It's a pretty expensive process, but that's part of the coalition's agenda, is finding funding and making it affordable for the agencies to be able to use this. And the blood has about a 35-day shelf life, so it's agreements with different hospitals to rotate the blood, keep it fresh. Since blood is such a precious commodity, it's hard to come by. So that's one thing that we're also working on. That coalition meets the second Tuesday of every month. If you guys would like, it will hopefully, and I think it's pointing in the right direction if you want to join those meetings, they're open to the public. And that's about all I have. On my side?
Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you do it?
Next, we got Nikki Shannon. She comes to us from the KIM volunteer ambulance service. She's with us now full-time. She started with us part-time, and she's been doing an outstanding job. So I wanted to give her an opportunity to talk a little bit about our rates and kind of what we're looking forward to, look towards the future on.
You've got two handouts that are green, one of those they proposed rates and one of those that agency rates. We've done some comparisons with a lot of agencies in Southeast Colorado on what they charge. Just see, like the code description, talks about mileage, non-emergent, ALS, emergent, so that's basic life support. Just kind of a comparison and where we're at compared to other agencies. And as it turns out, it doesn't look like Rocky Ford has done any increase since '21, maybe early '22. We're kind of behind the eight ball, because we know everything's gone up in the last four years. And our collection rates have gone down because of the insurance collection, what they say. So if you've ever looked at one of your explanations of benefits from your insurance company, hospital bills your $5,000, insurance says we'll pay $1,900 or whatever, so that other part gets written off, no matter what you bill. So partly what Rocky Ford has been doing is a summary billing and then some itemized billing. So what we're proposing is just going to a base summary billing, and the rates, you can look at these comparisons, and on the second page shows what Rocky Ford's at now, what we're proposing the rates to be. That rate is comparable to an agency in Southeast Colorado that works a lot of IFTs. In fact, I think they have 350 lectures, that one we talked about?
Yes.
Which we're also trying to grow our IFT volume as well. So these are our proposals. And one of the other charts I have here that you do not have is the CMS approved rates, which is the Center for Medicare Services. An example would be, because we're in rural Colorado, let's say ALS 1, so 0427. Even though we may say we're going to bill 2200, Medicare's only going to approve 67792. That's all they're going to approve. So if the patient has a deductible, then the patient will have to pick up that. So there's a lot going into this. We need to work towards collecting higher percentages while still providing the top-quality service. And if you have any questions.
So I'm going to piggyback on this as well. We have provided what our proposed new rates are to the council, but we also wanted to allow for public comment, public opinion as well throughout the next, you know, whatever appropriate meetings needs to be before a decision is made for proposed rates to be effective. So we just put that data in there as what we're trying to project, what we'd like to have the rates done by if possible, when you see that.
And the next presentation ties into that as to why that's the target date.
I just have a question. So I know you said you wanted to raise rates, and then certain insurances only pay a certain amount. And you say you write off the rest.
We have to, yeah, we have to. So but third-party insurances pay more. So you make up, I think you may only collect 35% to 40% with Medicare and Medicaid, which actually ends up being 56% of our volume on our calls out of 1,089, 56% of them were Medicare and Medicaid.
So by increasing that rate, what we're doing is we're trying to collect that little bit of extra revenue from the third party and other individuals to try to balance that out.
That are able to pay more.
Yeah, we want to take our collection rate 42%, hopefully even 50% would be great. I mean, all of our labor expenses, everything, supplies, stuff like that. Yeah, yeah, it's tough. I had a thought that lost it.
So but you'd only get these numbers from third-party insurance that pay higher rates?
You're not guaranteed that. That's just your base rate.
But even, or cash, if somebody was paying cash, they would be paying this.
That's where I was going. So this opens the opportunity, the door, and I'm going to step into Cam's role for here a second. We're a volunteer agency, so we don't charge our residents. We, well, we charge, we charge the insurance, and whatever their deductible is, we write off. That's part of our community service. I think that opens the door for you to maybe do that here with the community. I haven't mentioned that to Chief yet. It opens the door to do some more community service here, to help the community out. You know, your deductible's 200, maybe we can work into something, a program that we've looked at, offers like membership programs or something, or maybe. We want people to utilize our services, except for the last shift, I think they're done.
Oh, my goodness, I sat at the office, and I think you guys done five times yesterday while I was sitting in my office. We were crazy yesterday.
We want the community to know we're here for them and utilize this, but we don't want them to be afraid of getting a bill that they can't afford. So we don't want that to be the reason they call us. Yes.
Of course, I had the front page of this here.
Okay.
The tab EMS slash IFT. Those numbers there, it's like you want pretty much to match those numbers.
We did. I feel like, we felt like our volume pretty much matched theirs, and we're trying to grow that IFT to match that as well.
Our dynamic is very similar to that agency.
Which agency? Is this one?
It's Trinidad.
This is Trinidad, okay, the agency, okay, so, yeah, because that's.
And that's why I put EMS IFT over there, so you can see kind of what each department dynamic was, what to do, and see how it compares. Questions for me? There should be a chart in there, too, that kind of shows you our.
I turn? Yeah.
That shows you like the different insurances and what we collect on each, or like how much of our total call. So like Medicaid is 28%, Medicare was 20%, but the supplemental goes on top of the Medicare, because most of your senior citizens have the supplemental to pick up. Self-paid 5%, VA was 5%, work comp and commercials, so.
So on here, it says 0% from Pioneer. Is that because we're charging that through Medicare? Medicare?
No.
Well, no. Pioneer's a little different dynamic, and I'm going to explain why. So if there's a transport that's done, let's say by another agency, right? And that's done from Pioneer to ABRNC. Now, they still need to get back from ABRNC back to Pioneer. So if that agency's not available, then the next agency picks up the slack. And most of the time, that's us that picks up the slack. So what happens is we transport them back to Pioneer. So then we have to, in essence, work our magic to obtain the necessary revenue to balance that.
Kind of like an memorandum of understanding or like an agreement between agencies that we have with other agencies, it's like if we do this, this is what it's going to cost.
Right now, we just have an agreement with Pioneer for interfacility transports in that capacity. So you know, Medicaid and Medicare don't pay for that transport from a facility to another facility that's non-emergent. If it's a non-emergent transport, they don't pay it. So that's got to come to the patient or whoever's in charge of the patient, in this case, Pioneer. So then we have to look at trying to obtain those funds from them.
That makes it close, my bad.
So basically, I might have missed something, because I was kind of going over the chart here when she was talking. If I'm wrong, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
Just for clarification, now basically, you just want to match, you're asking to match, but Trinidad is already charging. Looks like looking at the chart for the valley here, you're all, everybody's charging both compared to without there. But at the end of the day, basically, understanding is what the insurance pays, what Medicare pays, is what's going to be paid, and the rest, if the citizen cannot pay, it's a write-off. Is that what I heard?
That's not necessarily true. So when it becomes a write-off is when the patient is Medicaid or Medicare. We can't charge them the difference. We have to accept whatever we get from that insurance provider. So that's how that works.
No balance billing, basically.
No. There's only balance billing for those that are private insurance or self-paid.
Clear as a migraine.
Pardon me?
Clear as a migraine.
I don't know if I can blink. I didn't print one of these, can I approach you?
Yes.
I didn't print one of these for each of them, but one idea was to, that each of them had to average, like totally do an average, and how much under the average.
And again, a lot of this might be confusing right now, because some of these meetings, we, you know, we're out of time constraint. So if you're not getting enough information right now, you're more than welcome to touch base with us at any point. So as we talked about this, we talked a little bit about the percentage rate of billing that we're collecting. So here's the other caveat, is since we're building up that business and we're building up our call volumes on the EMS realm, especially with the inclusion of the interfacility transports, we have this other caveat of actually maybe potentially looking at doing our own billing. And that's what I'd like to bring Ute up for. Ute, you're next.
I'm next.
Ute Bustamante, she's been with us for 15 years, almost 15 years. And Ute serves with us as an EMT.
So I'm here to propose an in-house ambulance billing. So our current biller is doing a good job. However, we are trying to do, I think with my ordering this class, isn't it? We're trying to be more fiscally responsible by utilizing our staff abilities for compensation, of course, but still saving money for the department and now allowing more money to go towards operations, medical supplies. This will also give us the opportunity to work more closely with our community, helping us to serve our community better. We are working on improving our billing and moving to an in-house streamlined reporting process that is cloud-based and meets all HIPAA requirements. Having the program, if I talk too fast, let me know, okay? Having the broker in-house will make accessing reports, accounts receivable, write-offs, collections, et cetera, more accurate because it will be in real time. Breaking it down, monthly is a minimum of $610.38, which is $4.88 for each, for minimum of up to $125 returns, whether we bill it or not, which makes it $9,400 a year. Again, this does not include compensation for in-house staff. Right now, we are spending annually $54,000 for third-party billing. In five years, that would make it $270,000. We would like to have a contract started before April 4th. After April, they are increasing the rates by 4%, which will still give us significant savings, but would like to take advantage of the current rates. We ran 1,018 on calls in 2024, and 189 were not billable. This does not include any fire calls. We do have to include compensation for billing personals. Instead of above, we need to discuss this before finalizing the contract. We did the demo, and one of the many key takes away was if the patient has a method deductible, we can put it on hold until they do, possibly increasing our collection rate and making our collection reports smoother. Another takeaway is when we submit the bill, we will be able to see an estimate of estimated collection percentage of PCRs, giving us a real-time financial picture. It searches for other insurance as well, decreasing our chances to get denied and saving time on the search as it does it during the process. Down the road, we can also look at doing billing for other agencies as we can add other agencies under our parent company and create future revenue by doing third-party billing. and create future revenue by doing third-party billing. That's, that's kind of our plan. And I do like the, the part where it says with the insurance getting denied, because your insurance only has like a window. So if we send it to the wrong interns, and they take their time to send us back, and they're denying us, that window closes, and then we can't bill again. So we eat a lot because of that reason. So that's one of the reasons we like this demo, that program a lot.
So attached with what Ute just presented you is, is a quote of what it would cost for the, the data system to use to do our own in-house billing, if that was to be the case that we, we all agreed to do.
So our initial payment would be three thousand dollars to set it up. And then, um, yeah, so it's, in five years, we would, we would be like, spending like forty-seven thousand in five years, which, if you look at the other one, two hundred and seventy thousand, that we would spend on a third-party billing. So that's savings over thirty-some grand, because you still have to compensate your in-house billers too.
Would you have to hire someone else?
No, we would do it.
So we would.
We have our own people.
Okay, so you guys would be able to do this essentially in your downtime?
We would have to take a class.
We would have to develop into it through training and certification programs.
There's three of us actually that's doing it right now, like they're doing, they're doing the regular billing right now, we send it up to the EMA. So we're getting it all organized and everything, and we would just add that in-house coding and everything else.
So it wouldn't need to be another position or anything like that?
It is kind of another position, yes.
Well, we're gonna build into it.
Build it into what's there, not adding anything.
Not at this point.
So the initial payment of three thousand, that's for all supplies or whatever, you're gonna need to do this?
This is just to set it up.
Just to set it up?
So, and then in, in six to twelve months, if we, if we wanted to be audited, that would cost us a lot of the seven thousand five hundred, but we could add that to twenty-twenty-six budget. Because we would like to have it audited, to make sure we're doing the process right, because you don't wanna, you don't wanna get it.
So would that be an annual?
No, this is just a one-time deal. But we would like to have it, it's optional, but we would like to have it. Because that, that way, we would like to know if we're utilizing the program as it's supposed to.
So, so we're currently paying a third-party fifty-four thousand dollars for this.
That's annually, a percentage, so we need more, then she gets more.
Because she's paid off a percentage of what she collects.
And then, so with this new program, we'd be looking at spending that forty-seven thousand annually?
No.
Over five years.
That's a five-year.
Five years, okay.
That would be a five-year. So annually, you will spend.
Over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in savings.
Nine thousand four hundred.
Yep, that's what I was trying to.
So basically, my thoughts in a year.
A little over two hundred and twenty.
But that doesn't include the compensation.
Yeah, we'd have to go an hour into that.
Yeah, we, we still have to do that.
I think we're gonna pay a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
My only other question is, is we talked about, uh,
Still divide that.
If a patient hasn't met their deductible, will be holding on to a bill? That doesn't sound legal. How are we, how are we holding on to a bill and then charging it after a patient caught their deductible? That doesn't, doesn't seem right. I mean, I understand why. I mean, it makes sense, but I don't know how it.
We're going in too deep in the mud to be able to talk about it in this deep, because we can really go on, and it's like a mess. So if you're, if you'd like, we'd love to have you come by, and we can discuss it a little more in person.
If that system, that, that program, it's what it allows it, so I don't think it's illegal, because it allows that. It's that program, that you're paying for, this thing you should set up.
And then looking at the program rules, then that's where the rabbit holes start kicking.
It's all HIPAA regulated.
Well, I just know that, so I had really good insurance at the prison, and I know that if I, you know, when I, when I brought my knee out, there was an issue where a date was wrong on a procedure, and they refused to cover, so that's why I'm concerned.
Well, you can hold on to it for years, it's just gonna be for like, it's like the time stamp.
Because we're, we're just now collecting, now I'm gonna give you an example, we're just now still collecting a lot of bills that we submitted in twenty-four, and we're just now collecting them in twenty-five.
No, I get that, and I understand how long insurance takes to do that, but, I don't know, to hold on to them, to, that, that, that sounds like, I don't know, I guess some of us are old enough to remember when we used to post data check. I mean, that's what it sounds like to me, is hey, don't pass until Friday.
So whatever that program is, is allowed, that's what we can do.
So, Mr. Martin, like if you have like ninety days, say, to bill Medicare, it's not delaying the billing, it's waiting for the hospital to submit theirs, and meet the deductible, and then we submit ours. So you have ninety days from the day of your service to submit that bill. And then once they met the deductible, it's actually better for the patient, because then they're not paying multiple people. They pay the hospital everything plus their deductible, and then they just pay us their portion of whatever the insurance said they're responsible for. So there's nothing illegal to it, it's, it's the way the billing comes, you just do it. It just falls into that timeframe and how you, how you bill.
Okay.
Does that, does that help explain it?
A little bit, yeah.
Processing a lot of it, getting it processed.
Yeah.
I don't, I just transitioned, keep in transit and all that, threw my stuff off, it's a while. We've got thirty days, whatever to get it. You're calling the wrong insurance, that's how long you're saying.
We would love to throw some more education at you, it's just gonna take one more time.
Yeah.
Take five minutes.
What is the increase, increase in rate, four percent after April first to twenty-five?
They're doing annually increase, so after April. Yeah, so if we wanna take advantage of it, we would have to have a contract by then. We don't have to necessarily start it by then, we need to have a contract.
That would lock in that contract, right? Before April first to lock in these rates.
Yes, to lock in these rates. We, we don't necessarily have to start it.
April first, four percent. And does that lock them in for the full five-year term?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that would be a five, we would do a five-year contract.
Every five years, yes.
If I start walking to the hospital, is it cheaper if I get you on the way?
No.
I have a, I have a question. So do, are we currently budgeted for fifty-four thousand for twenty-twenty-five or?
So we're, we're budgeted for the amount of the biller, the third-party biller, for twenty-twenty-five? That's what we're budgeted for.
For fifty-four thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, because that's what we paid for last year.
So this would kind of essentially minus what, what's already been paid in, in any accounts payable there?
It would be a saving of twenty-five thousand for sure.
And then with any training, and I guess any time from our team that would be built to that, you think that would still fall in what is budgeted?
Less than.
Very less than that, you still would have.
For the starting costs, it would probably be less than that. We're, we're looking at the different courses and certification programs? We're just, we're still price comparison.
We have to do that, certification for that, yes.
We're just trying to find the best fit.
And then the final piece down here is, you know, just looking, looking ahead down the road. Are pretty much all of our neighbors using someone else?
Yes.
Or, or the same person?
Everybody that, that's around us is using third-party billers. Very similar to one of us.
So yeah, on this tree, it's kind of an opportunity to be able to provide a service for.
So Nikki brought up a good point, is that when we develop that level of experience, we can find those, that third-party biller as well. So other agencies could actually look to us to do their billing for them, and then that's another source of revenue.
I think I'd like to see like some sort of like staffing, like time estimate. Because to me, I, I just don't know, is this, because we deal with how many claims a year, just based on that one sheet of like north of five hundred, what that, how many claims?
Thousand, forty-nine.
Thousand forty-nine. So, you know, with just one person, they'd be dealing with, I mean, we're two hundred days a year, they're gonna be dealing with five, six every day.
We would split the responsibility to not just one person, we would do it just like a shift. A shift would have their own bill, and we could actually rotate each individual within those shifts.
So you're saying, so you're saying you would have people that, their primary jobs in the fire, and then you're gonna have an array of these people, and then at the end of shift or something like that, it's like half hour, we're gonna.
We would have to set up and agree upon like stipend, so to speak, a stipend. It would be a percentage of what they collect, but I mean, it would be similar to that, where they would be issued a stipend, it would be just supplemental income to their primary.
Based on the billing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you'd still be like, making way more than twenty-five thousand dollars in savings. Even with staff stipend included, you would be more than twenty-five thousand dollars in savings.
I think I will.
I have a question. So this, if we were to do this, this would start April first? With this ZO, is that?
With ZO, yes.
But we would have the contract before April first, we wouldn't necessarily start April first.
Okay. And then with the other billing, there's no cancellation penalties or?
Well, we would have to give them notice, yes, we do. But they have the other people, they need to notice if we decided now till April, mid-June, because we still have to take that certification, certification class as well, it's like about eighteen hours.
And there's not necessarily a cancellation, so that, billing just essentially gets paused until that transition of billing takes place with the other biller, us, and then we can take it over from there. We don't lose it, it just gets put on pause for. Here it is.
The third person.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
We give her notice and say we're gonna take over on X amount of date.
No.
We would give them notice.
Yeah, there would be a transition.
Yeah.
There'd be a transition.
They would come up with a transition plan.
Well, I mean, I kind of, I kind of figured that, it was just kind of making sure that there wasn't gonna be any like fees associated.
Oh, no. We would, we don't have.
Right now, there is no contract with our current biller.
Okay, and that kind of is the, the, the other question I'm adding on to that, is there is a contract?
There is no.
On this one, you know, it's specific with the terms and conditions, and we're gonna go and read those.
Most likely, we wouldn't start till like June, but we would have to lock in and place before April first to get these rates.
Right.
That's our concern right now is the rates, and then we probably wouldn't start till June, because we need to think this first.
Circle back to the stipend. When we're talking about this, we're talking about a thousand billing thing, a thousand bills that we're sending out, and to come up to that, like twenty thousand dollars of savings, it sounds like we're giving up average about a stipend of twenty dollars per billing. Does that, does that make sense, what I'm saying there? Because that would come out to twenty thousand plus our associated here.
But you also have to understand that, once we start doing our own billing, that, that collection rate's gonna increase. So we're gonna be collecting.
Because we're not paying.
That percentage of collection then increases, once we start doing our own.
You're cutting out the middleman, and plus you have a program that searches, that is like searching for other insurance.
The increase you're talking about is the fifty-four thousand that we're not spending, right? That's, that's what you're talking about, the billing.
Well, we would save that amount every year.
Oh, you're saying because we're gonna be, we're gonna be billing more efficient, like you're talking about before, waiting until, okay, you're saying there's gonna be efficiency gains?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, one final question, I think you just, you're, you're saying that if we transition over to ZO, then you have all your curst, you have one hand, is fully trained?
No, that's what we were talking about, that's why we said we wanna lock in the price on April first, before April first. But it will probably take us to June to get everything.
So just training, no license or nothing?
No, it will be, yeah, you have certifications.
Does the training cost per person?
Yes.
I'm gonna look here right now.
At what the cost of that, so you're gonna bring that back to us as, and with more information on all of this?
Yes, this is just a whole door right now.
I just, this is the future that we're looking towards, you know, coming up with ideas to streamline a much more efficient system.
I'd like to see staffing hour, like estimates, I understand it's something we've kind of built in, but like just an idea of like.
Yeah, we can look at that. We have other agencies that do their own billing, and I'm gonna give you an example, South Fork Fire Rescue. They do handle their, a lot of their own billing, and they have stated that they would provide us with any information that we need to help with any decision making.
Great. Because, because we're, because I want to be clear here, we're talking about, most firefighters, excuse me, going wrong here. You're on an hourly rate, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you're gonna be operating at this hourly rate, and then for part of that normal hourly rate that you're working, we're gonna sequester some time for this.
Correct.
And then this will be an additional stipend on top of the normal pay.
Yes, and you know, we can even negotiate something different, as we start working towards, because there's, there's gonna be some discussion and some things that's gonna be related to the union. So as those conversations start happening, you know, this could be part of that as well, so I just didn't want to get too much into it without just, you know, having a little bit more detailed information as we start progressing along. If that makes sense. So I didn't want to get too much information right now.
That's fine, I think I just. It's strictly, because, and like, I don't know, that's why I'm asking questions. It, it starts to open up the question mark in my mind of, do we just have a dedicated person to X amount of hours to do this? Or are we, I guess what I'm saying is, if it takes X number of hours to do this, and we're saying we're gonna be able to do it in the hours that we have, are we affecting services because we're taking those hours away from something that would be another duty to do, correct?
Um, yeah, I, I see where you're going with that, yes.
So I'm just, that's, that's my concern.
So that, that, and that's where I said with the negotiation, so what we could do is figure out an hourly rate and throw those duties and responsibilities onto that individual as part of their normal job function. That as an EMT firefighter, that job description also includes bill, code, things like that. So that would just be part of the negotiation.
Yeah, just, my concern is more around, are we gonna have, are we gonna risk rather running into impacts to the, to the, you know, more important services like?
Well, we can always add like another day to it if we need to. If that affects it, we can just add another day.
Gotcha, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, the day that we're supposed to get off at eight o'clock in the morning, you can just stay there and do it, and then go home. So, we, we also.
We just don't know what that timeframe looks like yet, because it's a new business.
Yeah, and, and I, and I kind of, I kind of gather that this is still like an information gathering stage.
We have to figure it out.
Part of my question, so I.
Clarity.
Well, in, in the future, is, I mean, it is something that if it turned out to be a forty-hour-a-week position, that maybe it's something that we look at budgeting into the fire department, is we have an actual billing person that just does that forty hours a week.
Yeah, that may have been stated more.
So I mean, it could turn into that, whereas right now, we wanna kind of see how it's gonna go, and then.
You gotta understand, the fire department is, is an all-hazards, so we're, we're everything. So coding, throwing minutes, it's one more thing.
They can be coding, and it goes off, and off they run. I mean, they drop what they're doing and go do what they're supposed to be doing, it's.
Yeah.
One final, I'm, I'm gonna ask this, you brought it up, you don't gotta answer it, but before I even ask it, I'm gonna say I'm a lifetime member of Union, retired. But you brought up the Union, is everybody over in the building, the, the firemen, the first responders, the dispatcher, everybody over there, are they all Union?
No, they're not. And we're gonna have a follow-up meeting to that, so that follow-up meeting will be more in the work section, and we'll discuss that a little bit more in detail.
I guess my concern is, is kind of a little bit along the lines of Thomas is, is you're telling us that multiple people, so, so people from different shifts are gonna be taking care of that billing for that shift. Does that pose a liability with that many hands in the pot?
Give me hands in the pot.
Well, I mean, we got Kyle, Kyle takes care of our, that's our numbers guy, he does that.
So we don't have, we don't touch money.
Well, you're not touching money, but you're filing insurance claims, and if, I don't know, I just, it sounds like you, you mix too many people into that, and things may not always, one guy may do it this way, another guy may do it this way, and it's not necessarily wrong, but it's, it's different. And I just wonder if, if like, you know, one person doing the job makes sense.
Okay.
And, and I know, and I don't know how that, I mean, of course, we gotta see numbers and how it works, I just.
We're gonna have two people doing the coding, and we're gonna have one person doing the emergency.
But it's all gonna be regular, right?
It's all SOPs, SOGs, they're gonna be following the same structure.
And each procedure is gonna have a code, so it's, it's not like.
You've got seven codes, you're gonna put in. Seven codes that we can use, and honestly, a check of balance, you should have at least two people.
Never one.
Never one.
Because if something happens to them, we won't.
Well, yeah, right, that makes sense.
So this is gonna be a small team, we're talking about.
Yes, a small team.
Because from your initial presentation, I had drawn up this picture in my head that we're gonna have fourteen different people.
Yeah, so it's one person per, so if you do our shifts, it's, it's one person per shift, and we have three shifts.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of wrap this up. On this, it sounds like a couple of things would be helpful. It is a estimate on hours, kind of how you will build that team.
Okay.
One thing I'll add, if you can also give us an estimate on the different training and licensing costs.
Okay.
And then if there are any other questions anyone has, this is our first time seeing this, so we have some time to ask questions. They're, you know, they recommend that they're still working this new program service out. And we are receiving this with pretty ample time, and we've seen this at another meeting to, you know, hopefully be able to take action before that April first.
Thank you. We have now, I'd like to bring up Brandon Dickinson, he's our fire captain, and he can talk, we looked at our fire report.
Good evening, everybody. I'm just gonna go over some things that's been going on specific to structured fire. Like you said, we're broken into three categories, being fire captain, specific to structure, we're gonna go over some data here. So in the year 2024, we have registered seventeen building fires. Obviously, that does include the, the two bigger topics, the Brewer construction fires, as well as Liberty School. This does not account for the multiple times we went back there. Those were, you know, seventy-two-plus-hour assignments that we were a part of, so that doesn't fall into that. When we get into our bigger numbers, we've got brush or grass mixture fire, we've got around twelve of those, wrapping up with about sixty-seven total, including those with forest, woods, and wildland, and they'll touch on wildland more. When it comes to MBCs, which is a motor vehicle accident, motor vehicle accident with no injuries, we clocked thirty-five, and we had twenty-two with injuries. The twenty-two with injuries generally involve extrication, which brings up a different data report. Going on further, with where we're at staffing, I think this is a testament to where we're at in our skill level and our training. As far as automatic mutual aid given, which means we have a mutual aid agreement with neighboring departments, we only responded to one automatic mutual aid. When it comes to mutually received, we only received nine throughout those three hundred and five calls of service. So that's a testament to our training and numbers of where we're at.
Before you go any further, I was gonna tell everybody, you're not seeing this particular report in front of you because it's actually a pretty lengthy report, giving you a very brief summary. We will email you the actual extended report.
So when I'm talking building fires, that's gonna break it down on what type of building, the size, and I think we can just get lost in the details on that, so we can email that follow-up. We did recently through 2024, sent five of our full-time members through a firefighter one academy through Trinidad Fire Department. We're lacking one course hazmat operations, which is gonna be done here next month. Once that's completed, we can test out of that, and we can have five firefighter one certified employees full-time. I did touch base with the Jefferson Washington acquired buildings, following up from last time I was up here talking. I talked to the supervisor, and he's gonna give us access after the asbestos payment, so there'll be more training going on. And I'll get locked down some dates once that's done to keep you guys in a loop. We are moving towards truck checks. Every day, we're checking these trucks, we're checking the tools, we're checking their operations, fluids, capabilities, everything of that sort, to make sure they're ready to roll when we need them. We're moving over to an electronic check system, to where we're gonna be using a tablet rather than pen and paper. That's gonna be, give us more analytics of what we're working on, what we're not working on, what we need to keep, keep in our cabinets. Believe it or not, those trucks are stuff we don't need, they're stuff we need to add, and that's gonna help us narrow down what we need on that front. I did just wrap up the firefighter safety and disease prevention grant through DFPC, which is the state. We're hoping to get that award this year. If not, we need to work through getting some much-needed PPE that we have to continue. As our staffing numbers go up, we have several grant opportunities, but even with that, it's hard to afford what we need, so.
And I know, piggyback off that real quick. I know that the city council typically approves the, the grants that are submitted through the different departments within the city, but with the fire department, we also utilize what's called an FDID number through the Rockford Rural Fire Protection District. So this allows us to expand our grant opportunities, and we use the Rockford Rural Fire Protection District to also apply for grants. That benefits the fire department.
So besides for grants, I mean, on my side, it's pretty black and white. When it comes to rescues and that, I, I can give you all the analytics and data on it, but just know that we're doing our best. We're, we're increasing our staffing, we're increasing our training, that's gonna continue to evolve. But if there's any questions pertaining to any of that, feel free to reach out. Any questions at this point?
Are you doing drones, or doing something with drones?
We're working on it. We're working on a drone program right now, and just like everything else requires a lot of R and D. R and D, like what, what drones are we gonna use, what policies are we gonna use? There's a lot of R and D involved with it, and how are we gonna sustain the funding and maintain that funding as well? So that's what we're looking at right now, and we're looking at different grant opportunities, but we're also getting the guys to also get in the field of working with the lesser expensive drones, so they can wreck them while they want and crash them, but it allows them to gain that experience and be more, more experienced with that. A lot more knowledge, skill, and ability to be more proficient. So we're working on it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. All right, next, we're gonna bring up Colin, Colin Brown, he's our wildland captain.
Good evening, my name's Colin Brown, the wildland fire captain, I'm taking over for Seth and Yuri. And your deliverables there, you should have a handout about the wildland, Rocky Ford financial overview. Just gonna give you a snapshot of actually how big we are and what exactly we do through the city of Rocky Ford. But more importantly than that, we did just hire recently Corey Boakhouse. He will be the wildland coordinator for us, and we're gonna kind of split this up into two pieces. I'll be the financial guy, the process guy, and he's gonna be the vision guy. But I think we both agree that here in Rocky Ford, we have the potential to have a great wildland program. I think that is something we can accomplish, and I think that if we commit to that role, I think it is something that will be the envy of at least this valley, if not the state of the state. If you can look at your handout right there, you'll see a whole of the wildland program, and these are billable. This is from the state fire billing system, all right? Our bill amount is what we charge them for going out. This includes backfill for employees who staff us while we're on assignment. This includes meals, travel, fuel, and so on and so forth throughout that. To the right of that, you'll see how many deployments have gone. It's only gone up since then, right? And so has our, so to speak, financial involvement and gain from this as well, has gone up. You'll see the deployment hours has gone up as well, and also over time, the paying of this company. Where the city benefits from this is a significant cost savings potential for its employees. When we go out on assignment, they pay our salary and they pay the backfill, it's a net gain for the city, so to speak. And that's something we kind of wanted to push across to you guys, it's beneficial for why we do what we do. But more importantly, we get out, we get experience, we bring that back down to value. As far as experience that we're looking to get going forward, one of my big pushes is going to be getting better at prescribed fire and doing burning operations. There's a lot of times that would be beneficial, and I think that is something that is underutilized or misutilized down here as well, as it is very dangerous if you're not properly trained to do that. So that's gonna be one of the things we're gonna do moving forward. The second piece of this is kind of to explain how we get paid. Because currently, if you see right here, you'll see outstanding fires on your sheet. That is money we are currently owed, that is money that you have paid that we are owed right now. Recently, the state has seen a decrease in staffing and an increase in fires, which means that we are looking at longer periods of receiving those funds. What used to be thirty days is now sixty days. What that means is when we submit our bills, it takes sixty days for them to look at them. If there is a mistake on the bill, they send it back. Then we fix the mistake, send it back, that's another sixty days. That's what we're looking at. It's twenty-one hundred bills in the queue. I don't know where we are, but it's a big queue, and I think there's only two ladies here. We did speak with one of the ladies about a week and a half ago, kind of get clarification on that, and that's where this information is coming from. When we go on a deployment, we pack up, we leave, everything is up fronted by you guys, and generally, it's paid back in a timely manner. The state right now is about three years behind themselves for getting paid from the feds. So they're essentially fronting the money for us. It's a process, it's bureaucratic, it's long, but in the end, it does benefit the city greatly. And that's kind of all I had on my piece. I'm gonna turn it over to Corey and let him speak on the other side.
Thank you, good evening. Thank you for having us. What I have to say, we're kinda have a lot to do, like you just said, a little more in detail. Just so you know, with wildland, I'm talking about anything dealing with the grass, to shrubs, to us going out on deployment. Wildland is anything that's pretty much like not a structured. So not splitting up like grass fires and going out into the forest, that's all considered grass, forest, it's all wildland. And kind of going off with, he said, kind of my background, I came from, working in the Forest Service in Southern California. I worked on the Angeles National Forest on a crew. I worked on a type-three engine up in Sequoia National Forest. I moved out here for the apprenticeship program, went to a Forest Service Academy, worked on a type-six engine. I know how wildland works, how it can be a small world, and the reputation one wants to uphold when you go to these fires, and one you wanna build upon. And what I mean by it's a small world is like, I worked in California, but I still talk to people out there, and they still know what's going on out here somehow, some way. So my, our kind of goal and, and end game here is to try to build a program here, which Colin was saying with wildland program, you too, not just to have us go out per se on deployments, just to go out. In order to do that, we need to have adequate staffing, right? So right now, we have three shifts with four people on ship. We also have volunteers. If we go out, most likely, we take an engine out, and that takes up to, we want at least, we don't have to have four people. We need to have at least two, but we would like to see four people go out. And in doing that, we have to make sure that there's qualified people that are going out, and then there's qualified people that are staying back that can handle the area of response that we have here. And I'm talking about like the EMS, structured fire. So in order to do that, we kind of make a, pre-make a rotation roster of like what's allowable, right? To maintain this sustainable program, we would need, we want some seasonal firefighters back for that wildland position. And this doesn't, they were, this is kind of just presented to you guys. This position would be seasonal during the fire season, anywhere between probably April to whatever we can budget to. Usually, it goes to October, maybe a year, but it could be less than that. And that would just have that adequate staffing on, on hand to where we would have a seasonal employee there at the station. And if we did have a fire breakout that was wildland, we cover, wildland, the rural district is bigger than just the city, right? So if we don't have those seasonal positions, then we're just taking the four people that are on ship, and we could be taking them way down south for forty-five minutes, an hour away from here. And then what happens when we get a call for EMS or structure, we're kind of out of that response area. So that's why I feel like having that staffing, that extra staffing, just seasonal, is, is very crucial in accomplishing that goal and also keeping up with our EMS and, and structure side. Kind of going off of what he said, the way the deployment works, the way it works could anywhere, it's, it goes by operational days. So we will go out anywhere from fourteen to twenty-one days, and that's pretty much what's going on now with fires and most federal staffing, we'll go out for that amount of time, and we'll work that operational period, fourteen to twenty-one days straight, and that does not include travel time. So let's just say we go out to California, we work a twenty-one-day operational shift, and then we have travel two days on each end, that is, that's twenty-five days. What I'm trying to bring up to you guys is it, it works out really good, he mentioned it, to where during that twenty-five days, if we weren't out, we would be at the station, and that, that pay, that salary would be coming out of city funds. But now that we're going out, we're taking that twenty-one days, and we're helping the city out through that budget, where we're getting paid by the fire or whatever agency we're going out to work for, and we're gonna get paid that money back. So that is, that is, that is huge, that is very beneficial towards the city. That could go towards that, basically that, that profit in the budget right there, could go towards these seasonal positions, and that would also sustain, you know, basically a program that we wanna build, and also enables us to have staffing back at the station for what we're here for, basically, is for the community and for EMS and structure. The best-case scenario I came up with is having four seasonal wildland positions during the fire season would accomplish having the adequate personnel to fight the wildfires, and then that would cover the four people, the four full-time positions that are already there. So basically, I'm saying I could take out the four people, we would have five, and then we could still have people back at the station for, for EMS calls, where we wouldn't have to have that drive time in between if we have like a fire here in our rural district. And then basically, with the cost savings of when we could have that, if we have that sta, that staffing, like, so right now, we don't have those four seasonal positions, right? So there could be an issue to where we have, we have a chance to go out on deployment, like we get a resource order, they're like, hey, can you take this assignment? And we're like, well, no, we don't have the staffing, because we need, we need to focus, we need to be here at the station, right? But if we had maybe an extra seasonal positions, then I'm like, well, yeah, we could go out, then that saves the city budget money, and we get back, we build a state, we go through that, and you get paid back, the pay, the salary, and that puts a plus in that, that type of budget. So I think having that, having that consistency and being able to, to rotate, coming back and then going back out, and having that, that cost savings is, is huge in, in creating this, this program that we wanna do. Because unfortunately, cooperators in the wildland realm don't have the best reputation because they have to have certain qualifications to go out, they gotta have like an engine boss to run the engine. And it just seems like the going kind of thing is like, oh, they kind of get written off pretty quick through their taskbooks to get those qualifications. Well, I wanna show that we get out, get people trained the right way in wildland, so we don't have, I guess, a strain on the qualified people that need to take the engine out. And then we have more of that, because right now, it's like we might, we only have three engine bosses that could take the engine out, and then underneath them, we really don't, we just have basic firefighters, wildland firefighters. We don't have a qualified firefighter type-one per se, that's more experienced and qualified to run by two or three people under. So now this engine boss is running the whole crew instead of having that training going out. So that's kind of my presentation I wanted to give to you. Sorry, I might have gotten into the weeds a little bit.
That's all right. Does anybody have any questions, Corey?
I do. So I was here when we, when you first brought wildland to us, well, when Ray first brought it to us. We agreed to add extra positions at that time. Are we now saying we don't, those, those extra positions that we added to create wildland are not enough? We need more?
No, the last budget didn't allow for any additional staffing that was approved.
Those extra staff were approved two years ago?
Yeah, this last budget, it was not approved.
Forty-five?
Um. It was not put in the salaries.
So you didn't put it in the salaries when you did your budget?
Oh, no, no, that's not how it played out.
I don't know if there's a confusion between the full staff staffing and the. I don't know if there's a confusion between the full staff staffing and the
So did we have a reduced, reduction in staffing then, from
We can't, we can't increase the staffing to where it was, because it was
Because it, so it was higher at one time?
At one point, yes.
Okay.
So did the budget drop?
Um, yes.
And that might have dropped, and I think that the point of this meeting, calling up here, trying to explain to you how, I mean, do you guys understand how going out on these assignments, going out on deployments, having that salary, that pay, paid for us, helps out? And so that's kind of like
I see it, but I don't see it in the budget. Is what I'm saying, is that we talk about this, we go to wildland, and, and I a hundred percent support you, so please don't take this as I'm, I'm trying to attack you guys in any way. We, we have this wildland hours that we, these guys go out, you get paid by them to do that. That's, that pays our guys here as well. So that piece that we aren't paying to those guys for that four, twenty-one days, I guess I'm not seeing that that should be back in our, our general fund, helping us cover streets, helping us cover other things we do in this city.
I disagree, uh, any additional revenue that comes through the wildland program is done through the fire department. That should actually go to the fire department, not any other department.
Okay, then let me ask you this. Both your men and you have both stated that by doing this, it helps the city. If those funds don't come back to the general fund, how do they help the city?
Because it brings it back to the fire department, and it saves the general fund, the fire department under the general fund.
So you guys sit on this huge kitty, which I'm okay with, but if it's, if it's the, if it's our taxpayers who are paying that, that, that comes into the general fund, that then pays your guys' wages, if that's being covered by wildland, why is it, that extra should be staying in the general fund? We're, we're sitting on a city that needs to be ran, and it's still staying, it's all still yours.
I think, I think there's an opportunity here for maybe not such a binary discussion on that, where there is a possibility in the middle. And that's why, when Chief talked earlier about the union, I think that would be a good idea, maybe mitigate that. It doesn't need to be all going back to the city, or all going back to the fire department, right? But I will say that it is very frustrating when you go out for about four hundred extra hours out of the year, and you come home to find out that, oh, you're not getting another position to get back to the city. So, there is frustrations there, there's frustrations there.
Well, I guess my frustration is that we approved extra positions to start wildland. A year later, we were told, hey, wildland's doing great, it was amazing, we bought a new command truck, what, eight thousand something, you know, eight thousand dollars for a new command truck. We approved, and I'm, I think at least one new position, if not two, again, that next year, so that we can build this wildland. And now you're coming at me and telling me it wasn't in the budget, and I ask you why you didn't put it in your budget, and the best you say is that it just didn't end up in there.
Twenty-twenty-five's the budget.
And, and again, so why was not, why was it not put in the budget then?
That's a question for not me.
Will you create your budget, correct?
I'm supposed to.
Okay, so why was it put in there?
Um, that's a discussion I think we need to have another time.
I also think the positions that you were talking about, like wildland coordinator, the one before me, got that ball rolling for the wildland program, but we can't just stay stagnant. That's not building upon like anything, right? Like this is like a business or a city, you know?
I agree, I, I, and I totally support adding employees if they're needed. But we knew these things would happen, we, we, like I said, we have added employees, but now I'm being told that those employees don't exist in the budget. So now we're trying to figure out more space for more employees, when if we knew this was growing, we knew, we, we know what happens. I mean, fire season is all year round anymore with some of this stuff. We knew this was happening, we knew this was growing, and it's an amazing program, it's something we should be taking advantage of. But then I see that that should have been in our budget, we should have been proactive in knowing, we just did the budget a few months ago.
We are proactive.
Well, I'm sorry that
It doesn't trickle down.
I want to believe, but I'm not seeing
I don't want you sending that possession, that presentation that we are not proactive, because we are very proactive.
Then why wasn't that put in the budget? Why wasn't this introduced?
That wasn't the fire department, that wasn't the fire department.
But you were the head of the fire department, you were doing your budget.
Yes, I do. I, I can't give you the details, I'm sorry, but there needs to be
So it, it was cut from the budget, so if, if that's clear enough, it was cut from the budget. And to, to, I guess, help clarify the way that, the way that these revenues come in, revenues are coming in, and what that means to the city is it's less money out of the dinner client, out of our property taxes and sales taxes, that we need to move over to cover fire EMS. So they're creating revenue to help cover the services that they provide.
We keep zero.
Because the budget doesn't show us
If they make a hundred and spend a hundred, that's, that's what they do in, in theirs. So we have other departments who bring in, you know, close to zero revenue, and what that means is all of our property taxes and all of our sales tax and our franchise fees are what pay for those service, very important services.
Correct.
So, that's, that's the clarification there, it's not, we're gonna make money, bring it in, and then it goes over to this, to the library of this other department.
May, may I just say one quick thing? Every dollar we made, whether it's out of Andy, out of me, Cory, uh, we don't see it. It goes, I mean, we don't, I mean, if we saw it, trust me, I'd have a better job, but I'll be honest with you.
You guys are getting better.
No, I'm at my best.
I mean, and I'm saying you're taking, I'm saying the fire department is holding on to a large job that could be coming back to the general fund to help a city when it's struggling.
That's the question, no way. The money coming from these assignments and deployments are going straight to a hundred percent to the city, and we are not yet.
Yet we see a dollar.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end this, I'm gonna end this conversation. Uh, thank you for presenting this, and it sounds like if there's follow-up action, um, we'll be looking forward to that in the future.
Just, just before that.
If you have any comments, let, let's maybe turn your comments
If we could talk at a later time to clear up some of this?
Yeah, absolutely, and I'd like just to close out that you, you've seen in front of you a strong team of individuals that work diligently to make sure that the quality of life Rocky Ford, the citizens of Rocky Ford, and the outlying, uh, citizens of Rocky Ford, because we take care of a very large area, and you've just seen a, a very strong, qualified, um, dedicated team of individuals, I, I couldn't be prouder than what Thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you.
Alright, we will move on to our council reports, and we'll start down with council members.
Alright. I don't have a whole lot, uh, street board, I don't, I don't know when the next meeting is, I'll touch base with Diana. I went to, uh, I spent Friday at the library, in inventory. That was, that was interesting, I didn't know we had some of the stuff that we had in there. You know, I think we should all visit the library and utilize the services that we have there. I didn't realize the amount of the history that, that's in there that we can look at, and I think we take some of that for granted. Same with the museum, go visit it. I spent the day yesterday with, uh, our code enforcement, Mr. Tony, and I mean, that guy is out there in the middle of stuff, knocking on doors and dealing with stuff. And I know we talk about stray dogs all day, every day on Facebook, and it was just amazing, just cruising around town and stopping and going, well, there's a dog, and, and it's so bad that we know whose they are. So we just take them home, and then we, then we write tickets, and so he's out there doing it. So you know, when the citizens say that we're, we're not doing things, we're out there doing them. I, I saw firsthand that we're out there doing them. So, uh, I, I encourage every other council member here, go meet our department heads, go meet our people who do the jobs and own our city, do some ride-alongs, go sit in their office, get to know them, let's build that rapport we need to become a little bit better, and have more understanding, at least of what they do. So, that's all I got.
Okay. Kind of hit on some, you just said, uh, I noticed Kara, her intern, I guess you say, police chief, she has started putting on the, the, I guess, the Rocky Ford website, I think, based, uh, word of mouth. I've seen, you know, weekly reports with all the incidents, calls they're doing, I also seen it in, uh, yesterday's newspapers. So they are being a little bit more, what's, what's going on out there, I've seen two police officers blow up people today, so they're, they're out there. Be careful, watch your speeding, citizens and everything else. Uh, with that said, I'll get into mine, I first of all, let's see, who am I starting? The Grand, we'll start with the Grand. The last few weeks, they've, uh, they've shown Homestead, for one week, had ninety-five patrons, Dog Man was for two weeks, they did a two-hundred-and-fifty. Uh, Captain America was roughly a hundred-and-fifty on the count. And Paddington, I'm not sure what they had this weekend, and I'm not sure if they're carrying it over for the second week. They took maybe just one last week, but I'm not sure on that one, so I'm sorry there. The, uh, the Grand through the month of January, so far is in, uh, in the black, by about twelve-hundred, you know, after all, fees and everything else. Upcoming events, uh, February twenty-eighth, it's stolen, uh, it possibly could be Unbreakable Boys, or possibly Paddington, I'm not sure, sorry about that, though, we'll have to go and check it out. Thursday on March the twentieth, the police department, Rocky Ford Police Department, will be having, will be showing a movie, Willy Wonka, the original one. So you want to get down maybe on March twentieth, uh, and have the evening out with the local police department. It's also, I guess, gonna be sponsored by the county health department, the tobacco, tobacco control program is also, I guess, gonna be helped sponsor in that one. Some of the openers we discussed was, uh, bark hold training, Chris, the projectionist, will be going to, I think the suburbs of Dallas here for three to four days, he'll be leaving May the twenty-sixth, coming back the thirtieth. They will have a relief temporary projectionist to have any showings while he's gone. Uh, still, uh, some of the new business discussed, uh, theater maintenance, uh, need to get signs for the, the fire department, need to get some signs for capacity, the fire exits. Looking to see maybe get a bid out or something for, uh, the carpet cleaning, get the carpets all clean. Mr. Dean's has done in the past, I'm not sure if he's still, still doing. Uh, need to get some smoke alarms, carbon monoxide detectors installed. They, they have some, but any more. Uh, we did, uh, did attend, uh, or they did have the showing for the Mar- Marisol, for the, uh, the water. I know council member, uh, Mullins and Martinez attended as well as I. Uh, it was put on through, I forgot the book, what do you remember, it was Paddington?
Palmer.
Palmer.
Conserv- water conservancy.
Paul was there as well.
Well, yeah, she was there, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, well, she missed the movie, uh,
I did not, I was on the other side of the theater, we weren't together, because we can't be together.
Okay, but, but thank you for being there, she was our, I know she was at, at the first one, she was in the middle of all that. But, uh, they had about a hundred, a hundred and twenty people showed up, it's, uh, concerning the, the water. Spoke with the couple of the, uh, presenters, the gentleman that was
Mike Bartolo. Doctor Mike Bartolo is the one who worked at the research center for many years, he's since retired.
But, uh, I think Tom and I spoke, who was the gentleman, it wasn't you, Bartolo, it was the, the one that was up at the podium at the ask, at the last. But anyway, they said if, if they want, if we would like, they would come in and visit us and share more waterloose and stuff with us. I know last year, we sold the water that was up in the reservoir, because it was non-diligible to us. Having a discussion with them, and, uh, water laws are constantly changing, I mean, you know, we, we done sold the water, it's gone, it's history. But, uh, just because we have agricultural water, Denver, Aurora Springs, they're doing it every day, they're changing them laws. So, you know, they're asking for help, communities, whatever, to help band together to maybe save some of the water that we have down there, because right now, they're taking water out of the Beck Canal. A lot of water over in Beck County is gonna be sold out of our springs, if I remember correctly. So please keep up with that. Uh, we're looking at, uh, the Creed Repertory Theater being coming back in September. Uh, don't forget, you can help support the local theater by, uh, attending it, going to the shows, they're only five dollars a head. You can buy, uh, ads, advertise there. You can, uh, you can actually rent out the theater, rent, uh, show any, your movies and stuff, or whatever things you might have, you can, uh, rent the building out. You can, uh, put in bids on the old posters, buy snacks to eat there, take home, you can take out, you can also donate money to your services. Just for y'all didn't know, Lahana, Lamar, Los Angeles, this Rocky Ford has the largest screen, this possibly up to Garden City, Kansas, so you can go to Lahana and have a twisted tour, you come to Rocky Ford and watch a big screen. Hey, I mean, we'll put after, uh, that was pretty much it for the Grand, the next meeting will be the following month, so it'll be March, April, the third Thursday of April, six P M. Anybody, public anywhere that's, well, that, want one, come to come. Some of the other things is, uh, I'd like to do a little shout-out, we have, uh, Aldrich Vet Service here in town.
Yeah.
They're at four-ten North Main Street. I stopped in, visited with them a couple of days ago, just doing my walk. They are now doing spay neuter clinics, they're, they do vaccines, they do wild exams, they're open Monday to Thursday, eight to five P M. Uh, dog's pay is two-hundred-and-thirty to three-hundred, depends on the weight of the dog, cats are two-hundred-quarter, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Uh, dog neuter is a hundred-and-sixty-five to two-hundred-and-fifteen, cats neuter is two-hundred dollars, rabies are just fifteen dollars. Uh, vaccines for dogs and cats are fifty-two, so that's local. Uh, she doesn't go out in the field anymore, if anybody around farm or any, you want to go, she doesn't go on the field, but she does have medication, you come pick up, or she might be able to consult with you on what you might be for your animals. So shout-out to them, uh, I'll, I'll pick another business next week or the week after, do shout-out for these local businesses. Uh, I'd like to do a shout-out to some volunteers today down at the Small Town Project, uh, had two days, I think somebody come in, the small truck, and, uh, a lot of, a lot of commodity came in today, but we had excellent help, good help, people. Do a shout-out to George, I don't know everybody's last name, so please bear with me, we had George, Nick, Little Nick, Sylvia W., Theo, Lon, Eli, Don, uh, Cheyenne, Elaine, Sylvia, and I'm sorry, it's the second Sylvia, I forget your last name. Uh, Duane's mom was even there helping us, she was helping stock shelves and everything, uh. Adrian, the manager of the place, thank you all, I mean, there's a lot going on there, a lot of families in need here, so thank everybody that helps out with that. And this morning, after that, I went down here to the coffee shop here in town, the American Legion and vets. They're doing, uh, every Tuesday, I think is what it is, I'll get, that's further down. Anyway, I sat down and had a talk with them, because I've, uh, heard recently that the American Legion has been doing the flags for the holidays. The flags didn't get, uh, put up this last week for President's Day. And they did confirm with me that, uh, American Legion Post Eight out of Rocky is no longer gonna be able to do it, because the guys are just getting too old, they're passing on, they just don't have the help. So they're gonna reach out, they asked me if I would do it tonight, maybe in a couple of weeks, they can be here to do it on the agenda, they can speak to the valley. But they're in need of help, they want to know if any seniors, any, anybody that's able-bodied, that would want to work or help, students, Boy Scouts, the couple, or anything, but, uh, they would be doing on the holidays, they, they're gonna start at eight A M., takes approximately an hour to put them all, roughly a hundred-and-twenty-five flags, they'll pick them up at five P M. So, uh, we'll be meeting at the American Legion Field right here, where the cannon is, well, almost by the, by the library. And the gentleman to contact on that is Rod Rodriguez. His phone number is seven-one-nine-nine-six-seven-three-three-three-six for information, but please, I mean, the, the veterans and everything, or just, I mean, all these holidays we honor, you know, the Ford, President's Day, Memorial Day, but, uh, help them out, you know, any way we can, just help them putting flags up. They're also planning now, the, uh, today also, uh, a couple of gentlemen from the Orway, Crowley County V F W, were here. And they wanted me to put this out, and they want to come down and give us more information, but they're planning on June the fourteenth in Crowley County, at the Valley, Valley Fairgrounds in Orway. It's gonna be open to the valley, it's gonna be a meeting greet for all the vets, families, anybody. Uh, resources for the vets and the families, on all benefits that they might be losing out or missing or not aware they're, aware of. The, uh, they will have a B S O, which is a, a veteran service officer will be there to help them, walk them through some stuff if they, uh, if they need it. Uh, the gentleman in Orway that you want to call, if you want any information, or just to speak, you're a vet or anything, is Matt Archuleta. His phone number is five-oh-five-six-oh-nine-zero-five-zero-nine. Uh, they're gonna be needing volunteers on the fourteenth, uh, for set up and tear down. Uh, they're gonna have food trucks, they're gonna have other types of food available, games set up for the kids, the families, drinks. Uh, if you want to help out, if you can't, uh, volunteer for your time and services, maybe donate some food or drinks to them, get with, get with, uh, Mr. Archuleta. The meetings they're gonna have is at the Coffee Break Project here in Rocky Ford. And it's every every Tuesday at ten A M. Yeah, it's gonna be hosted by the American Legion Post Number Eight. And the address is two oh nine North Main Street, so that's where they're gonna meet every Tuesday for the vets, you can just, friendship, you know, people that, different branches of service that you serve, uh, a lot of, uh, the, ask for the suicide awareness, once again, I have here crisis services here in Colorado or nationwide, free confidential twenty-four seven support. Uh, you can contact, you can call one eight four 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 nine three eight two five five, or you can text, talk to three eight two five five. Because, uh, sadly, daily, a lot of veterans, you know, suicide prevention, there's a lot of veterans with, post-traumatic and everything with, uh, they might just need a, a head to lean on, a shoulder or something, somebody, somebody to listen to them, so they asked me to put that out, you know, if you know anybody, you know, there's, there's things available, or just listen to them. So I'm helping them out, let's, let's help them, but I mean, they're, they're there for us, they have our backs. And I guess, that's it on, on the vets, that's on that. That's pretty much for me, just, uh, enjoy the nice weather, get out, uh, some spray cleaning people, get some spray cleaning done, clean them screens, get them gutters cleaned out, help us out because, uh, we might be getting some rain, do some flooding, thank you.
I actually don't have anything at the moment, I've been in disperse, trying to help from surgery.
I'll be quick, I think.
Sure.
Maybe. Uh, thinking back off of the Marisol event, um, it was really a good turnout, I wanna say they had a hundred and twenty-five people R S V P. Um, and we had pretty close to, I'd say between seventy-five and a hundred people there. Um, it was a good time, it was freezing cold that night, it was one of those nights that the shelter was open in Lahana.
It was a good dinner though.
It was a good dinner, um, Christine's catered that for us, um, Palmer Land Conservancy and the Lower Arkansas Valley Water Conservancy District are who sponsored that event. Um, and produced that film. Um, really looked at some amazing things at, about our water and stuff like that and keeping our water here, and remembering that, our land is not, is not valuable to us if we don't have water to grow on it. Um, so keeping that water here, um, is absolutely important as long as we're able to use it. Um, so getting, selling it to other people and not having it here is why we have so much desolate land in Crowley and Beck County. It'd be nice to not let Otero and Pueblo Counties turn into that. So very enlightening, um, a lot of great speakers and a lot of information given, some amazing families were also, um, featured in that film, so it was really a good time. Moving on, I have mailed out our membership apps, I am working on gathering our end of year report, uh, to bring to you guys. We are celebrating our eightieth anniversary as a chamber, we registered in March, or in May the fourth of, uh, nineteen forty-five. So this will be our eightieth anniversary, so we're looking at putting together some, celebration or gala or banquet or something that you, this year, and getting back to that annually. Upcoming events, uh, the Pancakes Pancake Supper is on Monday, that is put on by the Lions Club, held over at the Goven Building. Following that, the next thing we really have going on is our Easter brunch, that'll be on four nineteen, I'm gonna work with the police department, make sure that happens after the one up at the, at the Amco Park. Then we'll have our grownups who love us luncheon, and the Brido Expo that was supposed to be this past Sunday on the twenty-third of February, has now been moved to March thirtieth, so. Other than that, that's what we've got going on, just trying to get memberships going, and I'm hoping to break my number of seventy-five memberships last year.
How much does it cost for the pancake thing?
Sixty bucks.
I wanna say they're eight dollars a piece for adults.
Five for kids.
And five for kids.
That's all my friends.
Five. Huh? Oh, we do, we have a full chamber board right now, um, we had three open seats, um, we had three people show up that wanted to have a seat.
Nice.
So we sat them and we now have a full board again, I will update the website this week to reflect who all of those people are, um. Just to mention, um, Kami from the Fire Department joined, Daniel Santa Steven, who is a volunteer Fire Department member, as well as works for Burlington Northern. And Jaden V Hill, who is a young local student, only about twenty-two years old. Um, so it's really nice to have, uh, a younger group, um, at the chamber and help to move us forward and, see a better future, so we've got activities and people that wanna get involved and do stuff, and so it's, it's nice to have a young full board and we move it forward.
Will you be doing your weekly flea market begin this year?
Oh.
I had somebody ask me.
So yes, we did decide, um, March really isn't, we are gonna have one towards the end of March and one in April. May won't work out, and then as we get into summer, there are so many different vendor events that we're not gonna try and step on those toes. But we are gonna try and do one next month till the end of the month, and then mid-ish April. So there will be two before summer gets kicked off. Oh, sorry, one other thing.
That should be quick.
Sorry. So I have been working with the Goven trustees, now the L N R V D Foundation. Um, for probably eight to ten months, trying to gather quotes and get everything together, um. In January, I submitted a, breakdown of some improvements we wanted to do over there that include, um, upgrading our bathrooms, getting rid of some of the stuff that's been there for thirty years, um, making it better over there, as well as the installation of security cameras, and upgrading the locks and things like that around the, uh, facility that you no longer can even replace the keys for. Um, so that was approved, um, we are waiting for the funding for that to come through, and, uh, once I have that, I'm gonna send over a breakdown of it to Stacy, just to let the city know what we've got going on. Um, but it will be at no cost to the city to, uh, make those improvements to the facility, so. I'm excited to get that moving, tentatively, we're hoping to start construction, or remodeling on the bathrooms, uh, the week of March thirty-first, April first, so. As long as everything comes in money-wise and all the materials getting around time, that's the goal, so. A little bit of a facelift over the building, it'll be nice.
We're just watching.
Yeah, so, and.
Well, that sounds great. Exciting stuff. Exciting stuff at the museum, uh, I guess I'll go there first. Uh, so you've heard me talk about the website for quite a while, and, uh, it's a real thing. Um, it actually exists now, it's not accessible to the public, um, nobody is paying anything for it, but myself at this point, um, so. No cost right now, um, there's a lot of work. Just to give you an idea, we're doing this all correctly, we have, they're called accession cards, they're like library cards that identify everything in the museum. And they've been kept since the forties, I think, this is the, the latest, earliest one that I've seen, so. Over eighty years old on some of these, and they've got different numbers, schemas, um, like fifteen different ones, we have to make them uniform. Um, so that was a large part of that, that's done, ninety-five-ish percent done anyways, it's, it's done as it needs to be to make it work. And we're talking about, uh, three hu- three thousand nine hundred items, they're actually accession, so. We've gone through about four thousand items, there's probably about another four thousand just eyeballing it, that aren't actually accessions that need to be, uh, looked at. The next part of that is then taking all of those cards, scanning them front and back, and then putting those first onto that website. We're at about fifteen hundred, well, all of them are scanned at this point, and about fifteen hundred are on our online database, that brings it up to parity with our old access database, so. For internal record keepings, the online system is now superior in every single way than the old access system. It's highly integrated, you can click on an object and say this is related to George Swink, and you can click on George Swink's name and see everything. That has anything to do with George Swink, you can click on George Swink and see everyone related to George Swink and everything related to them. So, and, and it goes all the ways, like you could say, well, that's a plate, and you wanna see all the china we have, if you want, cuz we got a lot of china. And that brings me to my next point, is that, you know, that has very graciously offered to help us, cuz the next step on this is gonna be photography, uh, we're gonna, try to take as professional photographs as we can, um, and part of that is to give some guidance for somebody that knows what the heck they're doing. So we're very pleased that she's offered to help us, and we're gonna try to have as much of, uh, the board there, um, Rob will be there and I'll be there to, uh, take notes on that. Uh, so we're very excited about that. Uh, we're looking at, just on my napkin map, probably, four and a half, five thousand hours of work to, to make this happen, and we're actually about three hundred hours in, so that's why we've got this sort of progress. So very exciting right there, um, I'll let people know it's publicly accessible, that'll probably be once we get, some of the actual pictures up, cuz right now it's not very useful for the public, but it's useful to at least know what was there, um, for us. Let's see, shout out to Aldrich and Colorado Supply, but we're all very lucky to have a vet here, I've been here a decade. We've been praying for this, so I can't say enough good things about them, I love them over there. They're very helpful if you're, um, sort of doing rescue stuff and are kind of, medicine savvy, they kind of pick up on that, they'll run and work with you, help you out without, overextending financially. Circle back real quick, and this is my last point, to the, uh, Fire Department staff here. I wanted to make it clear that I think it's pretty obvious to everyone that we have a highly skilled team here, that's very organized, um, very professional, and we're extremely blessed to have that staff here. And, um, Nick has some concerns that, need to be really looked at through financial lenses. Because, we are a city with a vast amount of money, and we have resources that need to be spent very, very carefully. And we can grow things, it's, it's great if we can say, hey, we could get somebody else to pay for this and grow this, this thing, and that's great, I mean, let's say if we, we could get a, a, a Fire Department, um, use an extreme that's ten times this size, that's, that's great, and, and somebody else is paying for it, that's wonderful. The problem is, is that with that ten times size comes ten times risk. So if something doesn't come through, we can have these huge shortfalls. And, and it's not like it's, um, I also want people to get the impression that the Fire Department's funding itself entirely either, it's, it's a very large expenditure in the city, and it's, it's something that just we haven't been mindful of, so there will be discussions around this, and it doesn't mean that we don't support the Fire Department, we absolutely do. It's just that, the city has to make difficult choices, even when it seems like it's a no-brainer, it may not be. So that's all I wanted to say on that, and I can pass it over to you.
All right, thank you. Um, so I'll start, the seventeenth, I guess that was last Monday, um, had one-on-one check-ins with a couple of council members. Um, wanna kind of get back to doing those more regularly, whether that was monthly, um, or just having an evidence, we said, wanna make sure we're all, um, being able to, to have that time together. Tuesday, the eighteenth, attended the Oakley O P I, uh, meeting, um, the Oakley meeting, we reviewed the, the twenty twenty-four annual, uh, financial statements, so those are prepared by, uh, Hancock and Preis, and they just reviewed those, kind of similar to an audit, but, uh, a little, little different, just, you can review financials. Um, so everything's sitting pretty well over with the, the landfill. Um, one of the things that, that we received, and I shared it, um, with the packet, is that, uh, the equipment maintenance plan. Um, so that was really cool, we, um, talked through that, made some changes to it, um, but, uh, what Jesse does, is, you know, he has his list of all of his maintenance, and they kind of, uh, review this annually, and, you know, that way they know, okay, this year, you know, last year, we knew this was coming, we budgeted for this, um, three years from now, we know we're gonna be replacing this large, you know, quarter million dollar piece of equipment, we're gonna be prepared for that, so, um, wanted to share that, and then the financials, um, I am gonna give to Rebecca, so those will be, on file here if anybody wants to review those. From Thursday, Friday, Seaco Brown, um, Stacy touched on that, but one thing I wanted to talk about is we did a, a tour, um, so we provided a tour to some folks. Um, and, uh, the, kind of last stop on the tour was Crystal Lake and the Fairgrounds, uh, we had, uh, someone from Goco, um, someone that works with the National Park Services, uh, someone with Lahana's, uh, Tourism, um, Maui Youth Corps, um, S K E D? S K E D, right?
C S E D.
C S E D. Uh, someone with C S E D, um, and, uh, it was really great to hear from them, we, we went and, uh, looked at, Crystal Lake and then finished up the fairgrounds, um, but, uh, just kind of hear from them, um, how, how much of an asset they saw those to, to our community and then to our region. Um, so that, I think that was some good, uh, affirmation validation as to, you know, um, the asset that we have and, and, the project that we're working on that Stacy's been, you know, leading for several years now, so, um. Know we didn't have the, the best attendance from the community, um, but I think it was still, uh, very valuable, and, um, we'll be sure to share any of the updates on that project. Um, coming up on, I guess, Thursday morning, gonna be attending a, uh, a C M L webinar, they're gonna be, um, discussing the federal funding freezes and how that's gonna impact municipalities. Um, I know one of the things that we're already kind of, um, looking at, we haven't heard anything, but the, um, the large E P A cleanup grant that we just submitted, that was really amazing. Um, did a lot of work getting that submitted, and that is probably one that is gonna be on the chopping block. Um, so the U S D A grant, um, for sewer, I think that one, that one is also in one of those, um, sources that is being, uh, looked at, but, um, I think that one probably has a better chance of, of not being touched, but we're gonna be getting some updates, and there's just, there's so many questions coming from all the different cities. Um, so C M L's putting that together to try to answer some of those with, you know, the information that is available, cuz there's so many things changing right now. But, uh, be sure to bring some of that back, and I know Stacy's gonna be, um, in there as well. Uh, next Tuesday evening, um, Ark Valley Regional Medical Center's gonna be hosting a town hall at six P M., um, so I do plan on attending that, if anyone is available. Um, they're gonna be sharing an update of where they're currently at, and, um, where they're gonna be looking, you know, looking ahead with their services. Um, one of the big things, and we kind of heard it with our, um, fire EMS ambulance, is, uh, the medical, pain rate is in between thirty to forty-five percent, um, so our hospital, can't remember, um, what, uh, what he told me, but it's, um, pretty high, around like eighty to ninety percent of, uh, A U and R M C patients are on Medicaid Medicare. Um, so when that system is only paying thirty to forty-five percent of what's billed, um, you know, they can't, they're, they're operating in the red, and they can't sustain that. So it's, there's a lot of issues there, and, you know, hopefully there's some things that can happen at the, the state level to, you know, change just some of that reimbursement, or, kind of, you know, um, do something different to, uh, you know, provide some, uh, twenty-four rural Colorado's, because, you know, that's really what it is, we can't, um, have the same, uh, reimbursement system that, uh, the metro area is, metro area hospitals do. So, yeah, if anyone, um, if they've been sharing that publicly, it is open to the public, but, uh, we'll be attending that, and I'll be sure to bring back any information there. Um, next, next week is Read Across America Week, uh, the school district is gonna be doing some activities that week. Um, the Thursday, kind of that final day there, um, we, uh, wanna see if anyone wants to join me to go read to students, so. Kind of look for a little quick hands, it'd be Thursday, probably midday, um, but, uh, we've been invited there, and kind of be looking for, you know, maybe Stacy, maybe Carol, get some of our team to go up and, and read to the students.
And that's work at the elementary?
Yeah, it'll be for the, the school side. Uh, this, Saturday, this Saturday and next Friday, there will be a, uh, community cleanup at. Saturday, this Saturday and next Friday, there will be a community cleanup at Crystal Lake. So Stacy's not going. We're gonna be starting clearing out some of that woods up there. So that project is moving. So this Saturday, next Friday, times are all posted, all the information's posted. Bring a trailer, some saws, chainsaws, and collect some firewood to
Well, that's right, we get to take home a week to clean up.
Yeah. Something else that's coming up on the state level that impacts us and have stood pretty close to is there's House Bill twenty-five eleven-ten. And it is the railroad crossing maintenance costs bill. So this was sponsored by our representative, Ty Winter, and co-sponsored by Monica Duran out of Barbata. So what this is, is this would be requiring railroad, the railroads to make sure that they're providing their maintenance and not, not take it off to us and not trying to, you know, not go into the cities and looking for the solution of let's close your crossroads so we don't have to maintain them. So this would be providing a, a real solution to that. This is a bipartisan bill. And it passed the, the House on third reading this morning. So it's going over to the Senate. Looks like there's some pretty good bipartisan support there. So that one, I think, is gonna be huge for us.
Sidewalks.
Be sure to get some updates on that as, as that one goes. Just a reminder, our, the city manager performance evals are due Friday, March seventh. And then we will be having our work session or an executive session on Tuesday, March eleventh at twelve P M. And then, wanted to, maybe right now we can make a decision or if we need to follow up. But how would first and third Tuesdays from twelve to two P M work for work sessions? And we would no longer hold our six P M work, work sessions.
Why don't we keep them both? I mean, we can get a lot more done.
If they all operate like this one did, we may not need it. This was pretty efficient.
We, we could, I guess for, for now, we could leave that on table. Because I mean, this would be the big change. And if, if that one wasn't as we did, we could always be more flexible with it.
Was it Thursday, two to four?
There was Tuesdays.
It'd be first and third Tuesdays from noon to two.
Well, we're looking at March twelve now for the next one.
So it would be opposite weeks from our council meetings.
This upcoming one, we wouldn't change. But if, if we had some consensus here, then we could get something set.
So March fourth, I'll make, I'll make any.
First thing would be March twelve.
March twelve would be Wednesday.
Yeah, March twelve is a Wednesday, right?
I didn't say the twelfth, I didn't say anything about.
What'd you say?
He said from twelve to two.
I said first and third, first and third Tuesdays from.
I don't like twelve to two, because I, that cuts into my chamber office hours. And I'm finally getting people used to those.
Two and after would be better than meeting first.
I, yeah, I would prefer like a two to four.
What was the consensus on that? The sheet we sent out, was there, did it have certain kind of?
It was, it was all, it was day.
Oh, it was only day, there was no time slots.
Yeah, the, the day and like, the day and the hours.
I think I heard other people say that later was better.
When, when two to four?
I'm a morning person, eight o'clock, eight to ten.
Well, I can't.
See, I can't do that because.
I used to be at five thirty.
Let's get kids to school and get myself to work time.
Well, and that's when I'll be at work.
Any day, there's one I prefer Monday through Thursday.
Yeah, summer, you'll be out early.
So I don't mind anything afternoon. But from six to noon, we're busy.
What do you say? Maybe everyone, two to four?
Two to four.
Two to four, first we start.
Are you starting on March fourth?
No, it would be, let's say.
The fourth is the eighteenth Monday.
Let's, let's, let's say, say, starting March eighteenth.
March eighteenth, good.
Then the pancake supper is on March third. Third for pancakes. It's a Monday.
Okay.
You do it every day of the week, also pancakes.
We will get those updated.
It's on the third.
And it's your house on the third.
Everyone good there?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm gonna move us on to our public hearing.
Email that out in case everybody's.
Yeah, definitely email that.
We got there.
So you can wake up now.
Hey, so I can say no.
Okay, well, maybe six.
Hey.
Hey, hey, can I use the?
Speak for yourself.
The one time you like, I don't wanna hear it.
One.
You guys, let's handle this outdoors. We're gonna go have pancakes and work.
We're gonna close the meeting and go into the public hearing and then, you know, yeah. You know the formalities.
Alright, the time is now eight fifty-eight P M. Mayor Duane Gray, serving as the dey's hiding officer of this hearing. Member of, members of the Rocky Ford City Council are, as the city, are sitting as the City Rocky Ford's local liquor licensing authority. Authority members who are present at the hearing are Councilman Martinez, Councilman Barone, Councilman Montano, Councilwoman Mosby, Councilwoman Roberts, Councilman Mullins. Council will be considering an application for, from Jane Vera Herrera, Patty Giana, and Joseph Zimba, D B A Doghouse LLC. They have requested the licensing officials to grant the transfer of ownership of the tavern, City Malt Venus Spiritus Liquor License to Joseph Zimba Doghouse Bar and Grill LLC at six oh six Allen Avenue, Rocky Ford, Colorado. The consideration by council requires that a public hearing be held. During this public hearing, I will first call for a report from the city clerk in regard to the application. So then ask for testimony on behalf of the applicant. And finally solicit input from members of the audience, both in favor and in opposition of the application. If you do wish to speak, testimony for the application, please come forward at appropriate time. Prior to opening this public hearing, must inquire of the body the following. Do any of you have any personal interest in this issue? Can each of you here consider this application in a fair and objective manner?
Yes.
Have any of you engaged in any ex parte communications with either proponents or opponents of the application? If so, will you please go on the record as to the substance of such communications?
Zero.
No. I will now open the public hearing and call for a staff report from Rebecca, city clerk.
Mr. Zimba has filed an application for transfer of ownership. Of course, this was owned by Jane Vera Downa, the Downa family. And they technically should have done this about a year ago. But there was a delay in vacations or something. And so Joe is filing it on his own because it was, it's requested from the Department of Revenue. So this is paperwork he needs to get so he can get the licensing in his own name. Then he has paid all fees and there is a, a check that will be sent to the Department of Revenue upon the expiration. Any other questions?
Can I ask why he never filed it and had wait for the Department of Revenue asking to do it?
Well, Jane should have filed it, but she didn't. And so now it came time that we needed to get that filed before the license expired.
Yeah, but that sold it a year ago, what'd you say?
Well, it was stipulated in their agreement together that Joe would get this in his name. But it needs to be initiated, you know, by them. And so now we've got all the proper paperwork in. And the license expires in March. So I did, I am required to issue a temporary permit when a transfer of ownership is filed. So this is good for, I believe, six months or one hundred and twenty days. And then if the liquor enforcement hasn't ruled, we can reissue for another sixty days.
Any other questions? And everyone has a packet. So I'll admit the exhibit presented to the local licensing authority as evidence. I'll now ask for testimony from the applicant.
I'll, okay.
I'm in the microphone.
Anyone be able to hear you too?
Sure.
Please write in. You do solemnly swear or affirm, either one.
Yes.
That you will, that the testimony you will give at today's hearing is true to the best of your knowledge and belief.
Yes.
Please proceed.
I'm not sure exactly what you'd like to hear from me. So what Rebecca stated to you all is, is one hundred percent entirely correct. So we are in the process of, of working through the licensing authority at the state level. I don't anticipate any, any hiccups there. It's just, right, deliver it as how fast they want, right? So that said, I, I mean, I, I, you know, I feel them questions you want. I'm not terribly sure what you'd like to, to hear.
Any questions for the applicant?
The only concern I had is why did you wait to do this till the state come down and said to do it? I mean, you know, that's concerns I would have if, if, if you're in the business and you're waiting till the last minute to, to renew the license. How is it gonna progress after that? That's my concern.
Sure. You know, the stipulations of our lease and everything have me listed as the operating manager. At which point the license didn't necessarily need to be transferred, is my understanding at that moment. But when I got better understanding from the state officials, they, they did inform me that this is something that I needed to proceed immediately, which I would like it. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Good there?
Awesome.
Alright, I'll look to the audience if anyone would like to try doing testimony for or against. Please go up to the front and state your name.
Marty Mays. Been in establishment many a times, really good place, really good times. Never seen no problems. It's a, I think it's one of the good places we need here, Rocky Ford. I'd vote for him to get a license. I like being in there and it's a good place. Never seen any problems, never seen anything bad happen in there. Power outside.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, time is now nine oh five. I'll close the public hearing. We're good there Rebecca?
Yeah. Just resume your writing.
One of the things noticed in our agenda, and I know we, we all intended following our work session, the items on here. So if you've noticed, under fourteen-two, we are missing what would be ordinance number nine eighty-seven. That's the main one. So I'm gonna ask for an amendment to the agenda to include proposed ordinance number nine eighty-seven. And.
Don't we have the eighty-seven and eighty-eight, don't we? There should be four in total.
We never.
Never made it to eighty-eight.
And none of us have seen it.
We emailed to you.
I, I. You've emailed it to me, but, but council.
He emailed it to us.
Okay, everyone is good on?
I saw it.
No, you're right, you two may not have caught it. But it should have been, I don't know why it's not here.
Oh, wow.
It was centrally appropriated.
I'll just, Rebecca only does it type up ordinances. It's really great that she did that.
Wow.
But in, in the future, that's kind of, that's our responsibility.
It was typed up, it was, anyway.
He did, he emailed it, dude, it all was typed up.
Well, in the.
You're blessing him in the format.
Oh, it was just, it wasn't in the right format.
Like a Word document. Well, that's, anyway. That's what we're just, alright. Well, it was formatted when I, when I copied it into the, the, it's, it's, it's a copy and paste. And I don't know why it doesn't work.
No, but it was just, it was in an email, like in the body of the email.
Copy and paste, and there it is.
Well, yeah, that's, that's kind of, that's, that's on us to, to make sure that we have that.
Came from you directly.
Or, or added properly so we can be shared properly. But is, I, I'll look to you all, we're making an amendment right now, so.
And really, there wasn't anything different on a B's, it was just put into a standard order. So.
I'm okay with the B being on there, dude.
I'd just like to say, my thing is that if we approve
You made a motion.
the repeal, so if we approve nine eighty-six, that leaves wiggle room for in two weeks if we don't have that B ordinance in place to. Because if, if somebody goes, you know, you, you know, you, we, we use the word free throw. I don't think we're gonna have one, but that does leave that two weeks for now.
It's still a little cold for him, isn't it?
I think so, but I don't know. I'm not a B creeper, I don't file one.
We're, we're making an amendment here, so if you want to see nine eighty-eight, have it.
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we.
Hold up, I, I still have some, okay, sorry. Okay, so we will have ordinance number nine eighty-seven as item fourteen point three. We will have ordinance number nine eighty-eight as item fourteen point four. And then the fifty-fifty sidewalk project would be fourteen point five.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna look at another agenda modification for us to look at new business and then move on to old business.
I think I agree. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, if you can.
I'd make a motion that we address as stated, new business before old business, so that we can get some people out of the audience that don't need to be here. Yeah, and then with the additions of fourteen point three and fourteen point four.
Yeah.
Keep motion, I'll second that.
So we have the motion from all and second from Robert, call for those.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Montano.
Yes.
Barone.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Okay, that's amendment, agenda amendment passed unanimously. I'll move on to new business, item fifteen point one. That is the transfer of ownership and approval of liquor license to Joseph Zimba, D B A Doghouse Bar and Grill, six oh six Allen Avenue, Rocky Ford, Colorado. We'll be looking on some action.
I'd make a motion that we approve the transfer of ownership and approval of, yeah, all them works for Joe Zimba and Doug Huffbar, second.
Did you call votes?
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Montano.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Gruley.
Yes.
Thank you for your patience, Rob, thank you.
Liquor license has been approved.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Now that's where we can all go for dinner after this.
Hey, are you doing a council or discount?
Stay ahead of the paperwork.
Yeah. I'm assuming I'm gonna do a menu and my beer prices. Right, not for me. Thanks, guys.
Alright, we'll move on to item fifteen-two. And that'll be the water department, please, you all. Join us up front.
You guys definitely have Cody on the water, waste water forming. Got, I don't know, we got five, six, seven trucks here. What we're looking at. The one we're really looking at is it's out of Perkins. It's, I don't know. Yeah, so there is one here that has.
I don't want more people. I don't want more people.
If you look at it, I mean, it's got one, two, three, four, there's six of them actually on it.
Which one are you looking at, Robert?
If you look, I don't remember what it is, it's, if you look under United. Oh, we're looking at the ones through Perkins, so not, not, it's not the first. And it's, it's the same truck. And it's, it's the same truck, it's, it's just, this is their pricing through going through G M Financial. And then if you look the next one, it's through United, and it's the same truck, it's cheaper going through United.
Would you still get it at Perkins?
Yeah, we'll still get it through Perkins, but it's just cheaper going through United on it.
Financial.
And, and I did a lot of talking, cause it was actually more than this, and I got it brought down quite a bit. To where it's, cause it wasn't within the budget, now it is. So like I do know is, we did budget for a, for a truck. It was put in the budget. I mean, we're looking at, I, we're, the reason why we're looking at the one ton is, we've got a ten thousand pound trailer. We've got a Maniacs, we've got the Skidsteer, you know, stuff, need to be able to haul, we've got pumps, we've got whatnot. There's not really much of a difference between twenty five and thirty five hundred, there's not really.
Then would that be the combo for C D L?
Do what?
With, with your trailer?
No, no, no.
No, you're still gonna have, yeah.
Nope, we're still good, it'll be under. So I mean, that, that's where we were looking at, and twenty five hundreds, I mean, they're more sought after, so it's kinda harder to find them.
Dual rail, well, do it.
Yeah. No, no, it won't be a dual, it, it won't.
So you're looking at the G M C's what you're looking?
Yeah, the G M C Sierra, the twenty, uh, twenty twenty five.
So I was gonna ask you a question real quick.
Go for it.
A little bit off subject, but, um, this is a lease price. Your lease dictates you can only drive it to so many miles.
Yep.
And you guys don't kind of know we're using that mileage?
Nope. Shouldn't go over it.
Twelve thousand, right, for the year, stay within it, cause they penalize vehicles over it.
Yeah, I don't do that, but a lease also dictates that you are not allowed to damage a vehicle so big, if it's a work truck, if you accidentally smack it with a trailer or something.
Sometimes there's, when it becomes for a war issue, someone like your warranty and stuff, I mean, you gotta watch some of that, yeah.
Yep, yeah, I think, cause we, like I said, so this, so you guys, you guys have approved last year the twenty four fifteen hundred that G M C Sierra. It's the exact same truck, exactly the same. It's all, I mean, it's identical. It's the identical truck that we're looking at, it's just lost there.
My only question is why you're here asking.
We approved it last year.
It's, it's. It's not a corporate policy. It's, it's budgeted.
Our purchasing policy states all vehicle purchases must be approved by the council with the exception of vehicles that were approved within the annual budget and already approved by council. We already approved of this last year. Yeah, so that, that exception says they don't need to ask for it, cause it was approved in the budget last year.
Is, yeah, I, 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 I think, yeah.
You may not doubt it?
Yeah, yeah, pass it down.
It's got a time on it.
In there, it, it was any motor vehicle needed to be approved at the time of purchase.
Yeah.
I, I, I have that question too, but I just said whatever, I mean, I got you guys what you guys needed, I can't.
Right, and we appreciate the work you did to get that to us.
I mean.
You just did what you asked for.
Which one, which number, which vehicle number are you looking at?
Okay, so if you, okay, so if you look, going from the beginning where it says Perkins, with our page in, this is the one that we wanna go with at the pricing. Cause if you do look, if you keep going.
And the fact there's like a list of six or eight.
No, not that one, so keep going, keep going back. Yeah, you keep going, keep going. This one there. So I did, I don't know how many pages it is, and if you guys do look where there is the six vehicles. Where it has the six vehicles listed, where it says the upfit, and non-upfit, the upfit is basically, it's cause it had utilities on, the utility box on. There's no way we can afford it, it's just added too much. For lease. We didn't wanna go with any of these trucks anyways, cause these trucks are, they're really nice trucks.
So you don't want leather?
Well, we didn't, we didn't need it, I mean, cause I'm not gonna lie, if you look in there, there is one here, it's a twenty twenty four Ford F three fifty, it's the cheapest out of all of them, but it's got heated seats, it's got remote start, and we don't, we don't need that, I don't, I don't.
But you do get an air conditioner, right, cause you guys are gonna need that.
Yeah. But I, I, I don't want, I don't want that, I mean, I, I don't want, I'm sorry.
All G M vehicles is subpar, cause the next available trim package is a Denali. So when I was going through this early, I was like, how updated is that S L E, does it have leather?
No, so this, this truck, you can actually go on the website, look, like I said, it's identical to the one they just approved. Uh, it's just a heavier package, it's got the rubber matting or whatever on the floor.
Boring.
The only, the only thing it's got is, it's got the Bluetooth, that's it.
If crew cab?
There's nothing else, yeah, it's four door. I mean, there's nothing else to it.
So it's same as Rick's, it's just the thirty five.
It's the grandpa, I guess you could say.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
It's the big boy.
Yeah, and I mean, we, we need something, cause like right now, I'm driving them, I mean, what a gear is that, two thousand fifteen?
Yeah.
Got a V six in it?
I can't hold up, man, I can't.
We, I mean, we put a trailer behind it to see what it could do when we had a line break, that thing strobe, I thought it was, well, we thought we were gonna blow the transmission in there.
Yeah, don't blow it.
This is what it could do, because.
But this is gonna be the same disagreement that we purchased on last year, right?
I.
Did we lease that truck last year?
Yeah.
Cause that's what we talked about, is leasing them so that we can.
This is the same company. Same company. Yeah, we'll take it.
Run a fleet and rotate through and.
That's why this, that's why this one was already approved.
Okay.
So that we're moving forward with the progression of getting these vehicles rotated.
So you got the twelve mile, twelve thousand mile yearly limit, and then city pays all servicing fees, right? Oil changes and everything?
I think, yeah, I, I don't, whatever, it's the exact same as whatever the other one was.
I think that's what the other one, yeah, CD does all service costs.
It is, it's the same.
So, yeah, it's exactly the same, it's only now, and, so, yeah.
And you, and you got pretty decals to put on the side, right?
No.
Look at them.
We need new decals.
They're on order. I think, actually, I think it's a D O T thing. They're on order. When it's, when it's. The city's.
Yeah.
But no, so.
One of the questions I had, and it was the opposite end of, of Michael's, will we hit up to that twelve thousand or in that range, or?
I mean, we'll, we'll be below that, I don't see us even getting.
Way, way below that, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
You're probably being, in other words, you're gonna be walking.
I think the most, I mean, I mean, that truck might, you know, go out of town here and there, just go into like trainings and whatnot, but I don't.
I wanna piggyback on that, yeah, you're probably closer.
We have five.
People in order to rotate it out, cause that will, why we lease them.
Yes.
So it's every three or five years.
But it's missed it, but the only every five years they own it.
Yeah.
Well, there's a buyout.
But we're, but we're leasing them so that we can get new vehicles every three to five years, so that we're not.
But if we get to that five year point, if we've had on keeping it, don't you think it'd be cheaper to buy it?
And that's an option we have at that point.
We do have that option.
There will be a buyout at the end of that lease that we can decide then.
The more we've.
Whoever the council is.
Yeah, whoever, whoever's still sitting in these seats at that point, they can decide if they buy or not.
They can make a decision.
Our, our big thing is we're trying to get rid of, we got, well, like on the water front, I think we got it to ninety nine, ninety seven.
Yeah, we got some more vehicles.
Uh, we've got, I don't know what, we here is that other Ford, a ninety two. I mean.
Well, I mean, you're driving.
Most of our trucks are.
Transmission car.
Rotating through so that we can replace and get rid of some of those older vehicles.
Those older vehicles aren't on these things.
No. But they're nickel dining us to death.
Their repairs are killing us.
The what?
Their repairs.
I know, that's what I'm saying, public function is get back to that.
Well, yeah, yeah, definitely.
We've got another truck on water that I wish we could, I mean, get rid of, it's got some electrical thing, and we have, we have to put a fuel switch on, cause it's not, it's still the battery.
And then when you're driving it, the game is going already away.
Which, which truck is this?
Yeah, it's a, I don't even know, it's like an oh seven Ford.
And you're still using it?
Well, that's your problem.
That Ford.
I mean, if, if it's got some safety issues.
No, but that's not even, it's not even that, it's, it's, it's just the mishtrometer likes to go stupid, is all it is.
Could be your safety.
Yeah, it's just been telling me.
I mean, it's already approved.
The guy who drives it don't even get it out the first year.
I, I would question that, so I see, I don't know if it will be, you know what line item this is approved under? I don't know who, who has the.
I don't know whatever he put it on, I don't know what he had on.
So we do have the G M C Sierra lease, which is our existing one, so I don't know, I would maybe look at capital purchases. I don't know if that's, if that's what we would be looking at.
Well, told me, it, it's in there, we pull up A D G.
I did some calculation, and it's between three to five thousand miles in a year we could put on the show.
Yeah, that's what I figured, yeah.
Yeah, that's who I was looking at, that twelve, it seemed a little high.
That's plenty miles for us.
But, but would we, could we look at a lower, at a different option where we only have seventy five hundred or ten thousand? That might bring our rate down, so you usually go up.
Are they lower than that? I don't think, I've never seen a lease lower than.
Well, well, that I know of.
No, I've seen, yeah, they have, they have.
But I've only seen a couple leases.
Oh.
Well, my brother.
Twelve thousand here.
A lot of insurance companies won't even accept like, like that you drive less than fifteen thousand, we have some of them just say, you're mine.
Well, the state of Colorado, I think it's fifteen thousand.
Oh, I, yeah, I, I drive like a thousand, but. Except for the company being.
These vehicles also, if I can know, these vehicles also were rated at a higher monthly payment. And the company came down on the payment to match up what we are able to afford. And so they did take it down quite a bit, add to a six point nine percent approval rate.
Well, and if we don't let them buy it now, we're gonna probably lose these trucks, these places aren't gonna have a whole amount of stuff.
No, I, I mean, and that, and that is, you know, that's, that's totally up to you guys, you know, but, uh, the, the point in, we, we've been making them hold onto these trucks for two months already, we need to bring it to you guys.
Sixty days, yeah.
This, this, this one that's at Perkins, I mean, they, they called me, it's, I think actually I'm on it, and they, but what's your answer? Cause they could have sold this truck, and I'm like, I'll let you know once tomorrow.
So, DJ, you want ten dollars or a tank of gas? Who knows where to take them?
But, you know, I mean, cause they, they pretty much told me like, this truck, if it's, if it doesn't get approved, it's, it's gone tomorrow, they're, they're getting rid of it. And they told us anywhere from a week to six months before we could see a truck just like it. So.
Any questions, comments?
Go buy it.
If it's in the, if we budget it for it, then.
It's, I, I, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say that it's clear.
Well, then if we make a motion, that clarifies it, right, even if it's not technically necessary?
No, 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 he's saying he's, are you saying it's not clear where it's coming from in the budget?
Right.
Oh.
Stacy's trying to clarify that.
So a couple, a couple things I have, first, I know we did the last one in July, I would like to see these stay on the same kind of cadence. Second piece, like I shared that equipment and vehicle maintenance, and I thought that was really great, that. And I would really like to see us across all of our departments do something similar.
Yep.
Um, cause you know, when we're talking about being proactive, you know, they're looking ten years ahead on, you know, how they're gonna be rotating out of vehicles. That we'd really like to see something like that implemented across all of our departments.
Yeah, I do agree with you on that, I liked that, that report.
We are working on a very comprehensive fleet management program right now, throughout the years, it hasn't really been kept up as much. But we are working on fleet management program, so we looked into a few different types of programs that would help us determine and keep track when our trucks get used or, or thing, oil changes, you know, things like that, it lets us know when that happens, it all goes into the, into the computer. It hooks up with an O B D, and then it, it runs off a G P S, and it's, it, it's automatically tracking everything about our vehicles. These are things that we've been looking into, we don't, it, it's, it's kinda hard finding something that's gonna be able to meet our budget, but as right now, the way we do it, we, we are working off of, you know, this paper form, we got everything typed up in the computer. We started a program when we hired Thomas. And he's been putting all our vehicles into, and we're keeping track of dates of services, times of services, replacement times. All our vehicles need to be replaced, all of them. And, and we're just working with what you guys gave us, you know, maybe more in a year. You know, and then we could get into a good five year program maybe or something on these programs or something with trucks. So, but yeah, we are working on, we, we do have a program in place where we're working on keeping track of services and, and when vehicles need to be replaced.
This is gasoline, right?
Yeah. So, I don't know, I mean.
You don't want an electric one.
The, the biggest thing on this, that was the thing too, is when we talked to even with Brody, not Brody, DJ and Brody from United. The diesel going with the bigger truck was gonna be the best whenever we go to take back and collect the resale.
Oh yeah, they're gonna hold their volume.
And, and then we kinda talked too about fuel mileage, you know, we, we've got two twenty five hundred, they see like three, four miles a gallon in town. You know, and yeah.
Your fuel mileage can be much different than that diesel, it's.
No, it'll be better.
It'll be a lot better.
It'll be better.
And not great, but yeah.
Kyle said it's under the three enterprise funds under truck lease.
Cause I, I know that one, we do have this older truck, I used to drive that one, I fill up like once in two weeks.
It's not, it's not than.
The truck I did, I'm not like ten hundred, it's like one week. And it's like, what the heck?
That's fifteen hundred, you can see.
That's a million dollars, I don't have, I live in mine fifteen hundred every month or so.
I get eighteen in mine, that's every. I just rebuilt my Dodge.
When you, when you're just pedaling around town, you know.
Yeah, you, well, and that's the most of what we do. Between here and the dollar store is the most much.
You get your work.
Yeah. You just put gas in the hose, or?
How's, how's your dump truck looking now?
It's, I'm, I'm loving being able to go just once to the, to back shop instead of having to go three or four times with the other one. So it's, it's cut time short, you know.
I gotta go to your home, can you park it up that much further?
No, we're waiting to see.
He's pulling it up.
And it's, I'm, I'm not gonna lie, it's nice having that deep enough top, that when we're off the job, that's, you know.
Well, I noticed that the loader was up today, there's no stroke on it.
Nope, there's not on that.
You know, there was no triangle on it either.
It's just up the four way.
I know, like, shouldn't be a triangle. Come down.
Just don't move it, that says yield?
No. I don't think it says anything. It's just a triangle.
Did you figure a yield sign?
Oh.
Do you know how long we replace signs? Paint you one, bro.
But he's got, he, he's got a whole shop full of that stuff.
Yeah, he's pulling it up.
Well, just paint you one when we replace it.
Kyle's, Kyle's trying to pull something up.
Okay.
Can we move?
To the next.
To the next one? Can we pause?
Or is it, is it intermissioning?
Rebecca says just hurry up.
Is it the seven day extra where we get snacks?
You know, I get up because I can't sit anymore. You should have brought the pizza, right?
Well, I'm sorry.
How is good pizza? That's, I, I told him he's gonna start making new things, and I'm like, oh, cool.
His pizza is good, we always get it with, we have tried the newbies.
I told him about some kind of, kinda like payroll that they're, they're, I don't know, they just mix up things like from where he camps, but I'm not certain.
Yeah, that's, that's where they wanted to go with it too. I mean, not that, it's the same truck, it has the same as the rubber inside, so.
He said oh two, oh, four, three, three, zero, 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 zero?
How's your loader run? You were pretty good, I see, it's always busy, I see it's something you get to.
Oh, yeah.
So, is that other one, did it go down? Which one? The one that was like.
Uh, no, so. We got a guy that we asked him to do it, but I don't know. It's just sitting up.
This is together of every season.
What do you have, is that three yard?
No.
Put it off.
Six point one G or something like that?
What?
Six point one G or something.
But, but the bucket's up in the car.
Oh, I don't I don't know what it is for sure. It's I don't like it though.
I was thinking it's.
You don't?
Uh, it it's just a, it's an awkward bucket, just cause it's got an extra electronic and so if you're driving it.
It is an auto level?
Uh, yeah, it's only, it has the option to do it on auto level and everything, but.
With all the speeds, are we gonna hook it to it?
Yeah, I had to see that.
Everybody, we have, we have Kyle joining us.
Can you, can you speak more to it, Kyle?
Yeah, yeah, I've got eleven thousand four thirty-one in all three of the enterprise funds, which breaks up both the payments. Of the the budgeted for this year as well as the one that was for last year.
So the money's there and it was budgeted for.
So.
So the water fund, the sewer fund and the garbage fund. All should have eleven thousand, although I haven't verified that. I'm just looking at the water fund right now. But each one should have eleven thousand four thirty-one budgeted for both. The existing payment and the new payment.
Okay, so it looks like we have seventy-five hundred across the threes. So for a total of twenty-two five. And then it looks like both of them, we're at about eleven thousand. So that, does that sound, sound right?
Yeah, the previous amount between the three was the 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 twenty and now it's gonna be doubled that basically with plus another forty dollars per month. Just for cost of. Increasing cost from one one year to the next.
Okay, so on the, for the GMC CR lease, our current lease payment is around eleven ten, I don't know. Wherever that is, um, and with this one at eleven, so across the three, it it comes up to twenty-two five, so this would fit within that.
Well, but you, across the three, it should be, yeah, thirty, thirty-five or something like that, but.
Yeah, I'm looking at, so I'm looking at O two one four three three zero 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 three two. And it looks like we have seventy-five hundred water, sewer and garbage.
Hold on a second, let me pull. I'm only looking in the water fund right now, cause that's, we've been basically spinning it out and making that allocation later on. We had a place to keep track of it. So you're looking in.
I gotta go to work at seven o'clock in the morning.
The sewer.
Yeah, but I think what you do versus what I'm gonna do is a little. You wanna go rebuild somebody's brakes? I'd love to, I might actually have a little transfer.
Let's see, print out of my budget. Is. Two thousand twenty-five expense. On dashboard. Join, what was that number again?
Um, O three two.
Four three three zero 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 three two.
So two zeros and everything. So. So we're at eleven seven, I think actually Join's correct on this site. It's it's not in that. In the, in that part of the budget, I haven't checked the trash or the public works yet, but. It looks like this line, particular line item is is. Just the last year's lease. So he is correct in that part of it. Um. Again, I haven't looked at everything. I haven't looked up a full, I'm just looking at each department as it goes through, but it should have been. Which you guys didn't approve, so it doesn't matter what it should have been. It should have been eleven three across the board, which would have covered those payments. So let's go look at our region sequence in there. Yeah, Doan, everybody, I think what we did, and I I'm just now thinking back to it, is we basically put that, those amounts into the water fund. And then we were gonna split it up at the end of the year between the funds. So, yeah, eleven thousand between the three. I I know it doesn't work for budget purposes, but it doesn't quite. All add up.
No, so I think this, this is just looking at our purchasing policy, so there is an exclusion where something is budgeted. Um, so when we do have something explicitly that states, you know, GMCCR at least, that that's clear. So I, that's, I think that's kind of what we're looking at, whether or not this was uh approved with the budget. Um, or if there is budget that would cover this purchase, but it wasn't approved with the budget. Whereas when we were looking at the line items, we didn't see, you know, this vehicle and 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 knowingly approve that. At that time. So it is, there is budget within the departments to cover this. And that's where it would need to, under our purchasing policy, need to be approved, um, like, like a vehicle.
Sure. No, I I totally understand, um, that, and with that being said, last year when we discussed, you know, the initial purchase, which really we, you know, it was kind of a. A philosophy of how we were gonna proceed from this year, you know, from that year going forward. We would attempt to start rotating our our fleet so that we could get, you know, sell off the older stuff and move on to the newer stuff. Um, you know, and at that point, you know, I, even though, again, it wasn't approved in the budget, that. That was the philosophy that everybody seemed to agree with and that was, and I apologize, I mean, it's, I should have had that in all three funds. But, you know, that that was where we were gonna go with it and if if we decide not to do that, I'm fine with that too. But I just, you know, that's, at some point or another, we're gonna have to start.
Yeah, and 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 I think with this, uh, yeah, the the intent is that we are, we did agree and we are all planning. Um, to start uh bringing on new vehicles so we can rotate the fleet. Um, I think this whole point of of the discussion was clarifying whether or not. This vehicle needed to be approved by a council vote. Um, or if it was under the exception in our fina, in our uh purchasing policy. Um, where a vehicle is pre-approved within the budget.
Right, and, you know, technically it's approved and it was approved within one, one budget. And, again, my apologies, I, it it's, it's, you know, unless the the total amount of those payments add up to. You know, the eleven plus seven plus seven, then, yeah, it's, it's, it's not in there.
Uh, thank you, Kyle. So, yeah, you can hit that, just, this was just looking at, uh, uh, Councilman Martin has pointed out in our purchasing policy that. Um, thought this might fall under an exclusion and uh it sounds like this isn't, wasn't approved explicitly. Um, for that vehicle purchase in the budget where it would not require a a council uh approval on it. So. We'll be, we'll be going to the purchasing policy that you have there and uh looking at the section on vehicles.
So then let me ask you this, how do we, so so we agreed to buy another truck, but your your budget line says. It's very specific, it talks about that CR that we did buy. How do we approve a truck for the next year? If we don't know what make, model, all that, how do we put a budget line for that?
Normally you wouldn't, normally it would, it usually just falls under capital purchases, capital. Um, but in some cases where we have had, like, the police cruisers or these ambulances. Like we, we, they have their own separate line item and we see, you know, this is this specific vehicle and it's like. When we're reading the budget and approving, we know at that time, we're approving that line item, which is this. When you have capital expenses, um, capital purchases, which, you know, say we budget a million dollars for capital purchases. Uh, we're, we're budgeting that amount, but we don't know what is gonna be requested within that and that's where. Based on our purchasing policies, we have the opportunity to, you know, make those approvals or or not, um, throughout the year.
I just wanna make sure that going forward, we're, we're making the proper line items in our budget to have these things ready and funded. Because whether it's a pickup truck today or it's a tractor ten years from now, or it's the skid loader of eight years from, or whatever, I, we need to have these budget lines in place. To do this properly instead of playing catch up like we seem to do as always.
Yeah, I I think it it kind of works, you know, all all different ways and and, you know, there are different ways to do it and, you know, I know we kind of. Um, you had pointed out earlier on uh our fire department budget, um, about, you know, maybe that director not to. Doing the budget properly and, you know, maybe this is the the same case, so, you know, it 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 is.
I just wanna get better moving forward.
If it's, if if it's something that we know one hundred percent, we're gonna be looking at this vehicle. And it's put as its line item, when we're approving the budget, we're approving that.
Yeah.
Thing, but when we're approving just the large amounts, we have these checks and balances in place. To, you know, ensure that what is being purchased has some sort of approval and and that, um, purchasing policy you have in front of you outlines that.
Yeah. I just wanna make sure we're, we're moving forward properly so that we're protecting our budget that the citizens pay for, but making sure we're taking care of our departments where they need to be. So are we looking for a motion now?
So is that considered in the budget or is that a capital purchase that we're about to do?
We have money.
He said we have the money for it.
It 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 is budgeted, but this, like, this part of it was whether or not.
Yeah, that exclusion.
We even needed to do an approval or if this was already proved through.
So now we're looking.
So, yeah, now.
So now we know it's not being approved.
Now we do need, now we do need the motion in there.
Can we pre-approve one for next year?
Yeah, maybe we should do it before the next one.
That you have it in the budget.
So, so we approve taking out Kuko's car salary.
I'll work for free.
You guys heard it, it's on record. That's a contract.
Three annual payments of just under four grand. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's like eleven nine 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 a year, but at least. So I make a motion.
Annual payment mean once per year?
Yeah, they make this sound weird, don't they?
Are we making three payments a year at this amount or are we making one payment a half year at this amount?
It has to be three times, it can't possibly be.
I think that adds up to the annual.
Stop making us do more nonsense. They're just, they're wording that weird.
Three year.
Otherwise, they'd be giving that truck to us.
No, that's, if you buy it through Perkins. Or we're buying through United, there's two different things here. Yes.
Okay, so it would be whatever, whatever.
It's the same truck, it's literally the same.
Cody's like, just buy me a truck, please.
Oh, I was just saying, United came, that United came out cheaper.
But this is three payments a year of four thousand dollars.
Which is eleven ninety-nine.
Which is, yeah, okay.
Okay, so are we good? I think so. Yeah, please. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of, uh, or the lease of a truck for, through Uni- Unified for the water department. We don't know how they're to work that, I'm sorry. I think we all know what you mean. I second it. Here we have the motion and the second, call the vote Rebecca.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Montano.
Yes.
And Mayor Gurley.
No. Motion passes. Right, we move on to item fifteen three, um, that is the city attorney, um, RFP proposal. So we did receive that, we received that proposal.
Yeah, you sent it up.
Just the one though, correct?
Just the one.
Has everyone had a top team YouTube review?
I read it twice. That was like a lot.
It was a lot, bro, it was a lot. It was a lot, a little bit.
But I mean, they seemed pretty qualified, that they handled a lot of other cities and municipalities around state.
One ninety-five.
Well, they had like fifteen attorneys, they they got.
I think there was like sixteen attorneys and another seven or eight.
For Nathan to do stuff, was there a different, is there a different rate if he has a paralegal do it? Is there a different price for litigation? This new one is all over the place.
Is there a different price on what Paul he has to do for us in a certain month?
Does he break it down into different categories and we get different hourly rates or?
I don't know about that.
I thought it was just straight.
Straight across board.
And I'm trying to think of the last bill I saw him do.
The itemized is his.
One ninety-five.
And then there's that, just the basic rate, you know, that he would pay if he didn't do it.
Anything. Oh, we pay him a basic retainer every month, yeah?
Yeah.
No.
We don't pay him a retain?
What is this hourly rate?
One ninety-five.
Straight across the board, there's no fluctuation with this new one, there's a lot of fluctuation.
The new one's gonna be very expensive.
And now this, this firm that we're, out of Denver that we're, uh, they do virtual, they wouldn't have to attend to me, they could do.
Correct, well, otherwise we're gonna have to pay them a lot of, a lot of five hundred dollars drive time every.
Hotel.
Yeah, plus hotels. Well, at least they'd, at least we'd have somebody to ask, even if they were virtual, I mean.
I mean, wherever we go, if we're out of the valley looking for an attorney, it's gonna cost you more.
Well, yeah, that's the problem.
I'm kind of like, from what I read on it, there's five member, right, it was sixteen attorneys, uh. X number of, uh, what was it, paralegals and they, what, there were six partners in the firm.
Yeah, they got.
They had, they specialized in all various aspects of government. Uh, they're looking to assign two to us. And the one, the woman who's currently doing Canyon City and, uh. Uh, was it Crowley County in Yuma?
And and you know, the other thing is that if, even if the hourly rate's higher, uh, there's probably, um. Some efficiency in having people that specifically deal with cities all the time, whereas Nathan's specialty is not really this. So, like, they may not have to look up case law and stuff, it's like they they know that, they have that in that folder right there. So it, it may take Nathan twice as long to do what these guys specialize in and do, so even he's more expensive.
In the, but there was a a cheaper rate there, I can't remember how it was worded, but it was for like, my understanding, the way I interpreted, it was like if the city were to call and say, hey, we need the information, where do we stand on this? To where his legal, whatever, they're, they can handle it at a cheaper, I think it was half the price, I think, of what he would charge. So I mean, how often will we be looking at just, you know, asking for?
There's gonna be a lot of parity, but we're, when it comes to the, the buildings we're dealing with and different stuff like that. Yeah, I I asked about that, I'm not sure that answers.
We've already put this out twice.
It was extended and and this was a proposal that.
It was extended again.
The other one was a respondent too, huh?
And Nathan has said that he will continue at this current rate, but he wasn't gonna put in.
Yeah, he's not excited to still be here, huh?
Well, he, he wasn't not, not excited, I don't think, he just said he's took on a lot.
Yeah, he's taken on a lot.
Yes, sir. You didn't eat one. Did you see it?
Oh, so on on this, I think a couple of things that I saw that I would speak to is, uh, you know, one, where we have access to. Uh, sixteen attorneys. We would have two attorneys, um, kind of specifically, uh, working with the city brought it forward. Uh, when we look at those two attorneys, there's, uh, um, you know, kind of resumes and and area of expertise, a couple of things that stuck out to me. Uh, for land use, real estate, um, uh, the, uh, um. Condomations, condemnation processes, uh, Colorado open records, uh, litigation, um. Some of those.
Yeah, anything they can do to speed those up, I mean, like huge.
But even if she comes across an issue that she doesn't specialize in, there's. But even if, if she comes across an issue that she doesn't specialize in, there's sixteen, oh, fifteen other attorneys there that have.
And, and, uh, water law.
Water was.
Well, there was two exclusives, I thought water was one and.
Well, and they already work for Crowley, so they're, they have some general idea of the area.
Yeah, this one we need looking for action to approve, um, to extend RFP or to. Uh, just table this indefinitely.
So can I ask, how long was that extended for?
Uh, one month.
It was one month, twice or just once?
Uh, once.
And it was initially posted for roughly a month? Two-ish months.
We posted online. It's posted on the boards, and I've reached out to a couple of guys as well. They're not.
Those locals like in the public.
As in like, I called an attorney who knew some of the people, like he gave the numbers, and then, so it was emailed out to their people and. And I think that Stacy and, they even emailed it out to different boards and different things, so it was out there.
The due diligence was definitely done, and then we, I mean, we got a candidate, it seems very qualified.
They, they did give us a list of present clients that we can call with the contact numbers to ask what we deal with.
I don't think they listed all of their.
But they give a list of every, every municipality that they recognize.
Well, and I don't know if I read in there that there was a, a specific timeline, so if we did them for, you know. A year and we weren't happy, we, we do the.
Yeah, it's not meant to be a world to, we're not on like a five-year contract.
Yeah, that's. I don't think I even saw that it was a. It was a lot to read, so I might be wrong.
Yeah. While I be interrupting this process, if I make a motion at this point, here's, somebody has something they wanna say, I make a mo- motion that we approve, um, the RFP. For, we do with, uh, city attorneys.
I'm sorry, what?
I made a motion that we approved the RFP.
Thank you.
Yes, we have the, uh, motion from Mullins, second from Montano, uh, to approve, uh, the proposal from. Uh, Hoffman, Parker, Wilson and Carberry to, uh, provide city attorney services for the city of Rocky Ford.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Montano.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Mayor Guruley.
Yes. That's, motion passes, um, we will follow up, uh, to work on contract with them and, um. Any other questions that anyone wants to send over, let me know.
Can we ask them to visit us once?
Ask them.
You know what I mean, just kinda get a face-to-face and then get to, to meet them before we do virtual stuff. And maybe you prefer us to go to them, you're, you're right. So we'd have to, we'd have to list that as a.
If we're charging, they're filming us.
I don't know, maybe they do it out of their kindness, or their heart.
All right, I'm gonna move on to old business, um, and we'll have. Fourteen point one, so that'll be proposed ordinance number nine eighty-five, an ordinance amending section seven seven five ten of the city of Rocky Ford municipal code. To remove references to foul chickens, geese and turkeys.
I make a motion that we approve fourteen point one.
What is that number of the ordinance, nine eighty-five?
Nine eighty-five.
Okay.
Can I do a nine eighty-five and nine eighty-six together? I make a motion that we approve the ordinances number nine eighty-five and nine eighty-six, the repealing of. Or, ordinance amending seven seven five ten and seven seven five fifty.
A second.
Call the vote.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Montano.
Yes.
Barone.
I'm gonna vote no on that because you're throwing the bees in with you.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
And Mayor Guruley.
Yes. Okay, so ordinance number nine eighty-five and ordinance number nine eighty-six are, uh, passed on first reading. We'll move on to item fourteen point three, uh, which is ordinance number nine eighty-seven. Councilman Martinez, why don't you just off there?
Well. Does anybody got any amendment they wanna add on there? You make the motion with your amendment.
Let me, let me pull this one back.
Or you wanna pull it into discussion?
Just in case there is discussion, I'm on.
Don't need a motion, do you have discussion?
No.
No? Okay.
So we got the committee in.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll look and, just jump if you wanna come up.
My first motion can't be amended.
Already voted on it.
No, we have it.
No, that was just changing of the word, what we're voting on now, or looking to, is now the, the actual ordinance.
Well, I'm former mayor, so Susan Jones. Um, chickens always come up. And I was late, granted, and I don't know what they talked about, dogs, serial cats. Envarments attacking the chickens, and that was a big issue when I was mayor, that people didn't want. Owners of chickens calling city hall and saying, well, my neighbor's cat got into my chicken coop, killed three, three chickens, what are you gonna do about? Well, there isn't anything the city can do about it, but that was one of the reasons that we voted it down, was because. There is no recourse as far as a serial cat getting in and killing a bunch of ki- chickens.
Can I respond to her?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll hold it if he.
I'm, I, I don't have anything else, but they.
So, I, I appreciate your concern, I appreciate you coming to speak to us tonight, I don't know if you have seen the ordinance. Uh, section F states that chicken coop must be secure and designed to protect the chickens from predators. Including but not limited to dogs, raccoons, cows and their wildlife, so it is in the ordinance that it is the, the responsibility of the owner of the chickens. To build their coop, we are a fence out, we're a fence outstate in Colorado, so we have to protect our flock. From anything that might be offered, that is on the responsibility of the owner, so that is in the ordinance that has been addressed.
But how many, how many chicken coops, a year from now, how many chicken coops are gonna have somebody? That's gonna go out there and make sure that they're in good shape?
Well, then they lose their coop, they don't, they don't follow the ordinance.
Okay.
It's a code violation.
Yeah, but once it becomes a code violation, then we go through those.
Code enforcement would have to be very active.
And the US, and then, and if, if you've got an issue with coops, then you can call the ASPCA as well, so, we, that's. Again, wildlife, and it's the same thing with your dogs and cats, it's your responsibility as the owner to take care of them.
No, I'm blessed.
Yeah, well.
Any, anything else there?
No, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak on, on this ordinance?
Well, the ones for the chickens, what I would like to do on this, like I said, it just, all we've discussed was chickens and now we're dropping. The word foul geese and turkeys, I think that ought to stay with everybody that I spoke to, constituents and everything. Was just discussed with the turkey aspect of it, I mean, the chicken aspect of it. But you're asking, well, yeah, but I'm talking, but you said we can, uh, change it for years, right, the way it's imposed?
That would, that would require us bringing another ordinance into amendment.
Yeah, you would have to make it, approve it with an amendment.
You can't, because you voted for it, anybody that voted for it can ask to reconsider. If you voted against it, and you lost, you can't ask.
He used to be a mayor too.
He used to, no, I'm serious.
Yeah, I know.
And I'm a former mayor too.
I, that's what I said, I told him, he was a mayor for a long time.
He's very clever.
Robert, anything else there, you need to comment?
Did you wanna reconsider, cause that's what he's saying he can do.
He cannot because he lost.
He voted no and lost.
Yeah, we can ask.
Are you abusing your fellow councilman?
No, I'm not. I was laughing at you wanting to go home.
That's all I have to, but the whole rooster thing, but other than that, I'm fine.
Does he have to motion approve before I can?
Let's, let's continue with, with the conversation, we're coming down this way.
Yeah, I'm on the same page, um, that's Michael Nicole, uh, you're no longer here.
Yeah, you are, bro.
No roosters.
No roosters, she said.
I said my piece, I'm ready to motion here.
You're good.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm waiting for every.
One of the, one of the things, uh, that has continued coming up on this is, um. Is, is roosters, I think that's the big one, um, like I kinda shared during our work session, uh, when I was asking, you know, what the concern is. Uh, to the people that I talked to, it was mainly noise, um, when I asked the question here, that, that, um. Another concern is that, um, the breeding of, of additional chickens, and then I think that also. Don't creates another challenge or issue around the, the number, um, so we, we also heard that as a concern. Um, and then if we have our, our, you know, adult birds and then the chicks, um, you know, and it creates. Pushes us more away from, um, kinda where that compromise is, so, I, I think, you know, for me, I would, uh. I would look to, I would be happy moving forward on this without, um, roosters and, uh. Now, we had looked at the, the number, um, if, if we could move forward on that, then the twelfth. Um, would, would make sense.
That's all I have, Ed.
I agree, I agree.
Wait.
Yeah.
You do have an existing, uh. Sound ordinance that goes back thirty years.
He brought.
Why the city has a decimal meter. Decimal meter, I don't know, but you do have an ordinance to, if somebody complains that the chickens are too loud. You do have an ordinance to deal with that, and this refers to that ordinance. Just a thought.
Before we vote on a modified version, perhaps, uh, we should just vote for the unmodified version, I make the motion that we approve it as is.
I'll second.
Is nine eighty-eight or eighty-seven?
Nine eighty-seven, I'm sorry. See what happens.
I'm sorry, who got the second?
I did.
Oh.
Martinez.
So we're gonna go that route.
Call the vote.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
No.
Mullins.
Yes.
Montano.
No.
Barone.
Well, I'm gonna have to say that my personal opinion on this differs from the constituents, but I'm gonna vote with the constituents, everybody I spoke to was in favor of it. So.
That's yes, huh?
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
And Mayor Guruley.
Yes. I lost track of their, what if it was it?
Rocky Ford, get your chickens.
And you get roosters, apparently.
Um, so ordinance number nine eighty-seven has passed with a vote of five to two, um, on first reading. Thank you, Councilman Martinez, and we will move on to ordinance number. We'll move on to number.
Can I ask for clarification? Did that include the bees, or was that amended without the bees?
Not yet, the bees is nine eighty-eight.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I thought they were the same ordinance.
So, nine eighty-eight, ordinance to allow back our beekeeping was inside the city limits of Rocky Ford, uh. I did email to the everybody, well, I guess two of you guys didn't get it, um. I'll real quick go through it, it's gonna allow bees, uh, no aggressive, no non-native. Uh, maximum of two beehives allowed, which is a two foot by two foot by two foot area. Uh, you're looking at twenty-four by sixteen is your normal length for box, they normally stack them at max about two foot high. So that's about the kinda space you're gonna see in a yard, bees are very easily directed through planting foliage or putting fences or whatever, and. Where their exit of their hive is, uh. There is a setback of five foot from public right of ways sidewalks or streets, five foot from neighboring homes or buildings. They must maintain healthy bee colonies and be responsible for ensuring that their bees do not pose a risk to the community. They are responsible to manage aggressive behavior and prevent the spread of diseases. Um. They are required to take reasonable precautions to prevent the bees from swarming, if their hive swarms, they are required promptly address the swarm. Remove it or contact a professional. That's about it, uh. If you guys wanna talk about it, we can, or.
Make a motion that we approve nine eighty-eight.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion from Robert, second from Mullins, call the vote.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Montano.
Yes.
Barone.
No.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
No.
Mayor Guruley.
Yes.
That also was five to two.
So ordinance number nine eighty-eight, um, passes with a vote of five to two on first reading. Okay, um, I'm gonna ask for a, another amendment to the agenda, we had. Um, at our last meeting, we passed ordinance number nine eighty-four on first reading. Um, so that was Councilman Mullins's, uh, ordinance that he brought about, uh, creating that additional clarity, uh, concerning removal of. Any council members, um, and that passed on first reading on February eleventh, um, so this would be on the agenda.
To put it on the agenda, I'm sorry, for a second reading.
For a second reading.
Well, this fourteen point six.
Yep, fourteen six, so looking for a motion to approve, um, the amendment to the agenda.
I make a motion that we amend the agenda to add fourteen point six, uh, concerning ordinance nine eight four.
I second it.
Call the vote.
It's something from last. Montano.
She asked you to vote.
Montano.
Oh. Yes.
You were sick, yeah, Mon- uh, Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby, yes. Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Guruley.
Yes, okay, so, uh, we'll move on to item number, uh, fourteen point six.
When I can hit fourteen point five?
Oh.
That really was fourteen point five, now we got to thirteen.
We're all over the place today.
We'll move on to fourteen point five, which is now our update on fifty fifty sidewalk project. Um, on that one, what it is, is we're now getting started, uh, with the. Estimates, not, Stacy, if you have an update on that, it could go, Des.
That's why he's been hanging out.
Maybe he's been here all night, uh, I texted her about ten times, can I leave?
No, no, no.
Um, so, we've been contacting everybody that applied. And trying to set up a time where people could be home to show us what exactly they wanna have done. I first started out and went and just started measuring stuff, and then people are, no, we don't want all that done, just this piece, this piece.
That's what I ran into.
So, um, we have to set up times where people, when they can meet with us during working hours, um, it's been pretty difficult. Um, as most of these people are, they work also, um, so. We're, we've been working on that now, and we're about a quarter way into it, um, we do have a concrete RFP made, did you get that over?
I have it.
Okay, we do have a concrete RFP made out for it, so we're gonna get our measurements, estimate what they want done and then, uh. Contract of a lot to go out and do the same. So, and that's where we're at on that, hopefully, I'm hoping now that the weather's nice, we'll do a, do some last of these.
Hurry up, it's gonna get into again.
I do wanna ask if there was initially fourteen, um, there was one applicant that applied before the program was approved. And that was on me, I set it aside, and then he called the other day and said, nobody's contacted me, and so that's when we went back through it. So there, there will be one more added to that.
That's a good first year, yeah.
That's a decent, yeah, that's a decent start.
I mean, that's.
You said some people are saying they don't want the whole thing replaced, but, no, if you're gonna come in and just replace. So you said some people are saying they don't want the whole thing replaced, but, no, if you're gonna come in and just replace parts with it, it's all still gonna be safe all the way across, right? You're just not gonna fix the worst of it and still leave bad.
That's up to them, if they're the homeowner.
In that, it says that you guys can dictate something that has to be replaced due to safety.
Well, if we're gonna replace half of them.
Yeah, I mean, if it's. You guys can require it.
Hey, Council, we're getting a lot of overtalk.
I mean, and that's, and that's true, and, I mean, most of these people, when you go out, you'll see. You know, they're like, no, we don't want, but I'll see some that has concrete that's starting to break apart on the top.
Stopping now.
You know, and, and, uh, and they'll be like, no, those will be okay. We just want this replaced. You know, and then that's the ones that are probably just high off the ground already, and kids are writing ramps on them.
The concern for me was, I mean, you can do it, do it right. Get, make it all safe.
We're on that ramp thirty years ago.
No, there's not. There's a nice one on Main Street.
Don't fix my ramp.
I like them. That's good.
But, yeah, so it's, it's a work in progress, and we're hoping we can get these done now that it's the season, and, and it's gonna get cold again, but it is gonna get warm again, so it's, it's hopefully we can get these done right away.
And what we can see, and maybe next year we'll get more. Yeah.
We appreciate the work you've done on that.
There's, uh, there's other pieces that we've been looking into also in our little areas that weren't included in our sidewalk projects, and we're trying to take care of those also. Um, so it, we're trying to do those in-house.
I see light barriers being done. That's looking nice over there. Do you get that in there? When are they gonna, it's not part of the fifty-fifty, but when are they gonna start the, the highway part?
I talked to Eric yesterday, actually, if I can, sorry. Um, he's working on the library. They were hoping to be over there pouring today, if not tomorrow. Next, they'll move up to Babcock Park, and then they're gonna come back and start working through the other downtown areas.
They'll get the stairway?
They'll get the stairway next after they finish the library, and then, um, then they'll move up to the downtown businesses.
And I don't know if I can go nuts, or maybe you know.
So there's a big pile of dirt over there. They're moving up with the sidewalk. Are they doing anything with that?
You'd have to ask them. Just catch them when they're over there.
It's gonna be the same with the library. They're gonna have a lot of access to it.
Yeah, they'll have access to it here and in Babcock.
Look, 'cause I just, I could use a little.
I'll have a bunch.
They're gonna get rid of it.
All right, let's bring it back up.
Yes.
Um, all right, so, yeah, thank you. Anybody, any other questions? Okay, so on this one, um, big piece is, uh, we're gonna be looking for a, um, a, just a consensus, um, or if we need a motion, um, to waive the payment deadline. Um, so in there, we say that the money has to be paid in full by, like, February twenty-eighth.
We won't have bids by then.
Right, so we're just gonna be looking for a waiver for this year on that, um, because.
Thirty days or something?
Just waive it, 'cause we don't know when we're gonna have those bids.
And, and that deadline's also in place to allow for, once we do have kind of a waitlist.
Yeah.
You know, it kicks them off, and then someone moves up mid, this year, we don't, we're, you know, we don't have any of those, um, concerns.
We've got enough to go.
So I think this year, it's just, you know, we can waive that deadline.
If they don't pay, they don't get it.
So, are we still allowing people to sign up for that?
No, the deadline was the end of November. They'll have to apply this year.
They'll do it again for next year.
Yeah, so it will open up again, um, around, I guess, summer.
I mean, honestly, if they put in an application right now, it would just fall into next year's.
That's what I was just gonna say. I know the deadline was November, but be nice if people could bring their applications in, like, you know, July, August.
Yeah, then we, you guys can go look at stuff.
It's just about deadline, you know?
Sounds like, is anybody opposed, like, anybody opposed to what you mean? Yeah, let's do it, okay.
Wait, I just, I just might add that the residence next to my house, eleven oh four, Gold Drive, the sidewalk was actually broken by the city, and I was on council at that point, and I saw it happen because I had bothers in my basement because of their leak in their sprinklers system. And I saw the city's truck break that sidewalk. So as long as you're doing sidewalk stuff, you might consider fixing the sidewalk between the street and their water meters, because it was actually the city that broke it.
Thank you.
I have one quick question for Stacy. Do you know when the cutting people are coming?
No, but we are on their schedule, so I, I signed the.
We just haven't gotten a date yet?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I did sign the authorization.
And you noticed around town or like in Dico Square where there's like numbers written on the squares? It's because they're raised higher than they should be, and we hired a concrete cutting company to come in and grind all of that down to a level.
All right, we'll move on to item number fourteen point six, which is ordinance number nine eighty-four. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Rocky Ford, creating in addition to the Rocky Ford municipal code, section two, two, ten, subsection D, providing additional clarity concerning the removal of any Rocky Ford city council member, and this is coming in front of us, um, on second reading.
It's the second reading, we just approved it.
Yeah, you have to read it twice.
We approved putting it on the agenda.
Oh, we.
And last time we approved it on first reading.
Okay. I made a motion that we move forward with ordinance number nine eighty-four. A second.
Can we have the, uh, for, for fourteen six? I have a motion from Holland, second. And we approved putting it on the agenda, which one, ninety-four, which has passed.
Okay.
Call the vote on second reading.
Uh, I don't have my sheet. Uh, I'll just go Martinez?
Yes.
Barone? Montano?
Yes.
Mosby? Roberts?
Yes.
Mullins?
Yes.
Mayor Gurely?
Yes. Okay, ordinance number nine eighty-four, uh, is approved on second reading.
So since we have to read that twice, does that mean we still have to wait to get chickens? Who had the first and second?
Uh, first was Mullins, second was Martinez.
It takes about four months to start from a chick to start.
All right, we have second public comment, anyone? To the council. Our next upcoming council meeting, uh, will be March eleventh at, uh, six P M. We'll have a work session, seven P M regular council meeting, and I'll add, uh, also on that same day, March eleventh, we will have a special meeting, uh, at twelve P M. No other business, call meeting returns, ten nineteen.
Just clarify that. That was the first reading. We have to do second reading before we can buy chickens. They're not adults.
You're all right. From Rocky Ford City Council, for the people of southeast Colorado, with your southeast Colorado news, I'm Adrian Hart.